Good morning, welcome to City Hall. We'll start off this morning with our invocation and pledge allegiance. The invocation will be by Al Potite, the pastor from Deaconess Hospital, and Councilman Greenwell will lead us in the pledge of allegiance. Please stand.
Would you pray with me? And my prayer this morning is for this council as it leads this city, that God would give you wisdom, he would direct you for all the benefit of all its people. And so, Lord, we bow before you this morning, and we thank you for your mercy and your grace. We ask your blessing on this mayor and on this council, and we ask that you would give them wisdom, that you would guide them, that you would direct them as they govern this land, and that they were governed for all of those people, and we ask it in your son's name. Amen.
Pledge of allegiance to the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We've called the meeting to order, and first thing we have is some proclamations this morning. Start off with Allied Arts Month. We have Deborah Center from Allied Arts, and Judy Hatfield, and James Pickle, and John Rochells from the board. Want to come up here? I'll ask clerk to read the proclamation.
Whereas the month of February has been recognized as Allied Arts Month by the mayor and council of the city of Oklahoma City, and hundreds of nonprofit organizations, local businesses, and the community at large for four decades. Whereas the arts enhance and enrich the lives of all Oklahoma City residents from all walks of life and backgrounds. Whereas the arts and humanities embody much of the accumulated wisdom, intellect, and imagination of humankind. Whereas the nonprofit arts industry has a nearly $315 million impact on our state's economy, supports the full-time equivalent of more than 10,000 jobs, and generates more than $29 million in state and local government revenues. Whereas Allied Arts has served as a champion of Central Oklahoma's art community, and has raised more than $47 million since 1971. Now therefore Mick Cornet, the mayor of the city of Oklahoma City, does hereby proclaim the month of February 2013 as Allied Arts Month in Oklahoma City, and he urges citizens to celebrate and promote the arts and culture in our community, and to especially encourage greater participation in the arts by the young, the not-so-young, and everyone in between.
Let's hear it for Allied Arts. One of the things that people talk about all the time is, besides all of the other things that are going on with Oklahoma City, whether it be the thunder, or the economic development going on, arts are so important to make a vibrant city, and Allied Arts is so important to make that happen in Oklahoma City. So Judy, I think you were going to say a few words?
I am. Do you want me to use this microphone? Thank you. As we kind of get everybody tuned in here, first of all, we want to thank the vice mayor today, and all of our city council people for proclaiming it, Allied Arts Month. It's very, very important to us to get the word out, and we appreciate that. We're very lucky today, I feel very honored, to co-chair the campaign this year with John Rochells, and he was going to be out of town, and we caught him early this morning, and so we're delighted that he was able to join us this morning. Just to give you an idea, the amount of our fund campaign goal is 3.1 million this year. We've already raised 2.15 million, and we've got the hardest million left to raise, and so we need everybody's help in doing that, of course. You know, you probably realize that Allied Arts is not just for the elite, but it touches 321,000 children each year. That's part of my passion, and I really appreciate that we're able to give them access, and for them to be able to become creative, which helps them in their school, and then makes them more productive as they become citizens, and continues to enhance our quality of life in Oklahoma City. John, I think you've got a few things you might want to add to that.
Yeah, thank you Judy, and Vice Mayor Mars, and city council members, thank you very much for proclaiming this February as Allied Arts Month. And just to build a little bit on what Judy has said, this is so important, and the proclamation is really so important for this campaign, because so many people have a view of the arts as people in ties going to the Philharmonic, or to the ballet, and it's so much more than that. Judy's already talked about the kids that Allied Arts gets involved, and affects, and it just affects every part of our life here in Oklahoma City. This is such a wonderful and vibrant city, and great vibrant cities have active arts communities. They have communities, because it just adds so much more to the culture and the fiber of our community, and really rounds it out, and gives it kind of the soul of the city. And so this is very, very important. Having a very vibrant arts and cultural community in a city like Oklahoma City makes us a better place for all of us to live and work and raise our kids, and makes it a more attractive place for others to move to this city, and be part of all of the terrific things that are going on here. So again, thank you very much, and I'll turn it back over to Judy.
Well, it's just a big thank you to everybody, and we really appreciate you doing this for us today. Thank you so much. Deborah, want us to be sure and let you know that this campaign goes on through May, and so we need everybody to jump on the bandwagon with us. Thanks so much.
You always come very close for our council.
Oh, boy. This looks like chocolate, just what we all need up there.
Keep you warm on a cool morning.
Thank you. Let's hear it again for Allied Arts. Okay, if Michael Owens would join me up here? Yeah, come on, all of you come on up. This week, we celebrate the birthday of Ralph Ellison, and we're going to do a proclamation for Ralph Ellison Day in Oklahoma City. I'd ask clerk to read the proclamation.
Whereas Ralph Ellison, one of the most celebrated figures in American literature, and an internationally renowned writer, was born in Oklahoma City, Oklahoma. Whereas March 2013 through March 2014 will mark the 100th anniversary of Ralph Ellison's birth. Whereas Ralph Ellison was the author of the 1953 National Book Award winner novel Invisible Man, numerous short stories, essays on jazz, literature, and American culture, collected in Shadow and Act, and Going to the Territory, and his novels Juneteenth and The Three Days Before the Shooting. Whereas Ralph Ellison, also an accomplished sculptor, musician, photographer, and college professor, received the Presidential Medal of Freedom in 1969, and the National Medal of Arts in 1985. And his hometown honored him in 1975 with the dedication of the Ralph Ellison Library in Oklahoma City. Whereas the Ralph Ellison Centennial Committee is working to ensure Oklahoma City and the state of Oklahoma recognize this famed literary treasure through public events and the establishment of other Ellison-related entities, such as memorials and archives that will live on beyond the centennial celebration. Whereas community partners will work collaboratively and individually to organize public events in a variety of venues to celebrate Ralph Ellison and his influence in raising awareness of the contributions of African-Americans to Americans' national identity, and the idea that embracing one's culture is the way to personal freedom. Now therefore Mick Cornet, the mayor of the city of Oklahoma City, does hereby proclaim March 1st, 2013, as Ralph Ellison Day in Oklahoma City.
Congratulations. Don't you tell us a little bit about what's going on in celebration, please?
First of all, we'd like to thank the vice mayor and the council so much, and the mayor in his absence for this generous proclamation. He is a native of Oklahoma, and we're just excited. A year-long event. You can go to RalphEllisonCentennial.com, and the events will be listed on there. This Friday, we're having a birthday celebration at the Ralph Ellison Library from 5:00 to 7:00 PM. It's going to be a great event. Congressman Langford will be the keynote speaker, but all of our representatives will be there, and we're going to have some dance, some entertainment, and we're going to have a big cake with Mr. Ellison's face on it, so you can come and have a part of history. But it's just an exciting time to recognize a great, not just an Oklahoman, but a great American that did so much for our country when it comes to literature, and unveiling what we like to say, identity for us all. And Tracy's going to talk a little bit about the symposium at the end of the...
Hi, I'm Tracy Floriani. I'm the Department of English Chair at Oklahoma City University. About a year from now, March 6th through 9th, 2014, we'll be hosting at the Skirvin, a national conference that will bring about 300 scholars of multi-ethnic literature to Oklahoma City, and they're very excited to come to Oklahoma City. They've never had their conference in this region before. This is the Society for the Study of Multi-Ethnic Literature in the U.S. And as part of that conference, there will be a public symposium open to all on a Saturday afternoon that will bring some top Ellison scholars to Oklahoma City to talk about his legacy, and that will be open to everyone, and there will also, of course, be jazz involved. So we hope that you will welcome visitors to the city throughout the year, and that you will participate in a lot of the events. Thanks.
Thank you. Give a round of applause. Okay. Rebecca, want you to join me up here? Rebecca Ambrosey, is that correct? For Peace Corps Week proclamation, I'll ask clerk to read the proclamation.
Whereas the Peace Corps has become an enduring symbol of the United States' commitment to encourage progress, create opportunity, and expand development at the grassroots level in the developing world. Whereas since 1961, more than 210,000 Americans have served as Peace Corps volunteers in 139 countries, and during the course of the past 52 years, 441 men and women from Oklahoma City have responded to the United States' call to join the Peace Corps. Whereas Peace Corps volunteers have made significant and lasting contributions around the world in agriculture, business development, information technology, education, the environment, as well as health, and HIV/AIDS, and have improved the lives of individuals and communities worldwide. Whereas Peace Corps volunteers have strengthened the ties of friendship and understanding between the people of the United States and those of other countries. Whereas Peace Corps volunteers, enriched by their experience overseas, have brought their communities throughout the United States a deeper understanding of other cultures and traditions, thereby bringing a domestic dividend to our nation. Whereas the city of Oklahoma City recognizes the achievements of the Peace Corps and honors its volunteers, past and present, and reaffirms the United States' commitment to helping people who help themselves throughout the world. Now therefore Mick Cornet, the mayor of the city of Oklahoma City, does hereby proclaim the week of February 24th through March 2nd as Peace Corps Week in Oklahoma City.
Congratulations. Don't you give us just a few details of what's going on?
Okay, as you know, or she just read, Peace Corps just passed our 50th birthday, and we've had about 200,000 volunteers in 139 countries around the world. We were created by Janov Kennedy to promote the ideals of friendship and understanding, and we have three goals. Our first goal is to provide trained men and women to countries that we've been invited to. Our second goal is to share American culture and values with our host country. And our third goal is when we come home, to share our experiences and our cultural experiences with our communities. So I'd like to thank the council and the vice mayor for honoring us with this wonderful proclamation.
You're more than welcome. Congratulations again. Okay, continuing on from the office of the mayor, we have a series of appointments. Have motion to second. Any comment? Cast your vote. Pass unanimously. Item 4 is adjournal accounts proceedings, receiving the proceedings for February 19th and approving the proceedings for February 5th. Have motion to second. Cast your vote. Passes unanimously. Item 5 is request for uncontested continuances.
Vice Mayor, a couple this morning on page 14, under item 8F1, item E, 1800 Northwest 8th Street, where I said that be stricken, the owner has removed. Item I, 1440 Northeast 15th Street, where I said that be stricken, the owner demolished, and where we worked at is rubble and debris. Moving on to unsecured, under item 8G1 on page 15, item B, 1715 North Douglas, where I said that be stricken, the owner has secured. Item D, 1953 West Park, where I said that be stricken, we need to re-notify. Item J, 2301 Northwest 19th Street, where I said that be stricken, we need to re-notify. And finally, item L, 1025 Southwest 33rd Street, where I said that be stricken, the owner has secured.
Do we have any other requests for uncontested continuances? They will recess the council meeting, convene as Oklahoma City Miss Facilities Authority. Have a number of items, and we need to move...
Mr. Mayor, I would recommend that item D go into executive session on that, so that if you approve them, you approve items A, B, and C, and vote separately to move D into executive session.
Okay.
Would item D go into executive session?
Cast your vote. Motion for A, B, and C?
Would the item...
Cast your vote. Passes unanimously. We're going to recess OC-MFA because of the item going into executive session. We'll convene as Oklahoma City Public Property Authority with a number of items. Comments or a motion, one or the other?
Would the item...
Okay, we have a motion to second. Any other comment? Cast your vote. Passes unanimously. Adjourn the OCPPA and convene as Oklahoma City Environmental Assistance Trust, two items.
Would the item...
Have a motion.
We throw a line, question mark. Is just made... Thank you. And is that a two-way adjustment? If the consumer price index goes down, do we reduce payment?
I believe that's correct. Marcia can come in and answer that question. I believe that's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? We do have a motion to second. Cast your vote. Passes unanimously. We'll adjourn OC-EAT and reconvene the council meeting with the consent docket. We have a motion and a second. Do we have any individual considerations? Hearing non-cast your vote? Oops. Did somebody say something?
On K?
Okay. Why don't you go ahead with that skip?
I just wanted to know, looking at this, is this a standard procedure as it relates to rail line?
Well, I don't know if there's a standard procedure as it relates to rail lines. This is a line that goes over the Oklahoma River, just to the west of Western, and it kind of parallels, it's called the old packing lead, packing yard lead, something like that, and it goes, crosses the river. It's been abandoned now because of the relocation of I-40. It goes down toward the stockyards and toward the airport area, and we're trying to acquire parts of that to be used for some type of trail use in the future. And so I wouldn't say it's a standard process, because I don't know how many times we've ever done this, but it's the process we're going into with the railroad.
So the track itself will be abandoned? I mean, we're not...
It is. It is already abandoned.
Already abandoned, okay. Because I understand this resolution, or this item, it's a railroad banking thing, and they have the right to go back in there, reinstall the rail system, and reuse the thing?
I think there is a reversionary clause that's backing into it. I think that's correct, sir.
So we then can use it for items, anything we want to, except we couldn't construct anything across it because of the likelihood, not likelihood, but the possibility of it being reused?
I don't know about construction. This is a pretty common practice across the country, and as far as we know, I don't know that any land that has been provided by a rail company has ever been taken back and returned to rail use. So they've been pretty positive in assuring us that this land is abandoned and will not return to rail use.
But they're not positive enough about it to strike that particular clause in agreement?
They have a lot of attorneys as well.
Probably more attorneys than they have railroad tracks. It seems like that with that provision in the contract, though, we would, if not legally, be prohibited from building across this thing. Practically, it would be a bad decision, if we have the likelihood, maybe not very strong likelihood, but the likelihood, and they have the right to put that track back in.
And that'll be a policy decision that the council can deal with later.
Thank you. So at the present time?
We're going through their processes to try to free that track up for trail purposes. Well, this is a step in the process of receiving plan.
Correct, yes. It is quite a lengthy process. We've been talking to them for a long time on this parcel of land.
Would the designated land be used, or...
Not at this point. We just realized that with the River Master Plan and other activity occurring along the river, that at some point in time, this offers a potential for, in addition to the trail system. There has been discussion about an equestrian trail along the river. This would be, that could be tied into this. It could be another amenity to support development in that area, and it connects to a railroad, abandoned railroad bridge that Department of Transportation acquired, and I think ultimately we would like to use as pedestrian access across the river, because it's a great structure, but it's not going to be used as a rail line any longer.
That was one element of the... Never let me use a railroad line.
No, I think with private rail companies, never, you can't ever say never, but we're operating off precedent here, which gives us a pretty strong level of confidence that we'd be secure in whatever we do with the land.
This is one of the controversial issues with I-40. With I-40, this is now truncated from the main UP line, and so this is the line that came off of it that spurred down to the south. So that's, it's split at this point in time. It'd be very difficult to reconnect it, but again, there's no forever.
Right. Well...
It's my understanding that trails in both pedestrian and bike and equestrian trails all over the country are built on things like this. That's the prime...
Thousands of miles of trail on a banned railroad track.
Right. It's not that you're going to build a building on it. Generally, it's going to be a trail on it, so if in the scenario where they came back to take it, which I think there's no precedent for that, but if that happened, you've got a trail to tear up and not a building.
Correct.
Thank you, Russell.
No, we're ready?
We have a motion.
Cast your vote. Passes unanimously. Come on to the concurrence docket.
Move the items.
Need a second?
Pat.
Oh, okay. Any comments on the concurrence docket?
Vice Mayor, I have a question on item M.
Okay.
As in Mary?
Go ahead.
Okay. And I guess perhaps direct it to Jim. In the handout, it says that, given the background, ordinance number 22,538 dictates the 3% portion of the new 5.5% levy to fund capital improvements at the Oklahoma City fairgrounds. The ordinance, is that something, if it were ever to be changed, would have to receive a vote of the public?
Yes.
Okay. I just wanted to check on that part. Thank you. Mr. Vice Mayor.
Any other comments on the concurrence docket?
Yes. I would like to ask staff a question on G.
Go ahead.
Is the Northeast 122nd? Water main extension.
Yes, sir.
On this project, when will they start the actual widening of this project? A lot of people are, continue to ask the question, why are we just setting all this equipment out there? And I never see anyone, except at 122nd, as far as actual engagement, and...
We'll see Mr. Winger again. Obviously, we're doing the water work first, and then we're going to come back and do the roadway improvements, as we always do. And I don't have a specific time scheduled for that, Councilman, but we'll get that for you, unless Mr. Winger can come in quickly.
Okay. Thank you.
I don't know whether Marcia knows that. Do you know when the actual widening project's going to work, start, Marcia? On, the item is a water main replacement on 122nd. Do you know? There he is.
No. We're, I know that we are going out ahead of the street widening intentionally to get out of the way, and again, to improve service in the area.
Eric, do you know if I know the schedule for the...
No, but I'm going to get that for you, and I can maybe have it by the end of the meeting. Thank you. You're welcome.
Any other comments on the concurrence docket? Cast your vote. Passes unanimously. Item 8 is items requiring separate votes. 8A1 is a ordinance on final hearing, establishment of no parking zones in Ward 2.
Ted, unanimous traffic commission approval, no protests, a move for approval.
Have a motion to second. Any comments? Cast your vote. Passes unanimously. 8A2 is establishing a two-hour reserve parking space in Ward 6. Max not here. Does anybody know of any problems with this?
Do we have anybody signed up to speak on this one? Line move approval?
Okay, we have a motion to second. Any comments on it?
I just have one comment. Since this is about parking, and I recall I made a very big issue about the parking meters some years ago, but is it too late to go back to, I mean, I said go back, with the continuation of the parking meters, is it too late for us to install some of the old traditional parking meters?
Well, you can always go back. We just completely bought the new meters, and we've made a significant investment into those new meters.
Mr. Couch, Mr. Manager, I apologize. Mr. Couch, I think if you took a walk-by survey of people downtown Oklahoma City, when they come down and park at one of these meters, it is the most confusing engagement to simply park your car. You have to decide whether or not you've got cash money or a credit card, and then you have to decide, am I supposed to get this little piece of paper and put it where? Then you've got to walk back to your car, open the car, and put it someplace on the dash, and then you've got to remember which one of those spaces that you actually park your car in, because the parking meter is usually about four spaces from where you park your car. A little simple 25 cents nickel or whatever into the traditional parking meter was so simple for parking. There's a lot of people that will stand out there at those parking meters, and they can't figure it out. And on a bright sunny day, the glare on that screen, you can't see anything hardly. I mean, I know what the purpose and the mission was, but I just think that we ought to, as we go forward with the new... or whatever into the traditional parking meter was so simple for parking. There's a lot of people that will stand out there at those parking meters, and they can't figure it out. And on a bright sunny day, the glare on that screen, you can't see anything hardly. I mean, I know what the purpose and the mission was, but I just think that we ought to, as we go forward with the new parking, designated parking areas, that we really ought to look at the possibility of being a little bit more friendlier with those individuals who come downtown to park. That in itself is a challenge for most people just coming downtown. And then when you get there and you try to figure out, you know, what am I supposed to do at this kiosk? That's my comment on the parking.
There have been some struggles with it. We've really had very few complaints about it. And we do have a video that's out. We put it out on the council website. It's out on the city's website, going through how they operate the meters and how they work. But I do understand your concern.
That in itself ought to tell us something. If we have to do a video, educational video for parking a car, as to how do you pay for parking? I mean, that tells you right there that there's a challenge issue. And for the really old lady that's 75 years of age, or 80, or whatever, that comes downtown, or someone brings them downtown, they probably not going to get to see that video. I mean, they don't probably get up in the morning and say, you know, let me check out the video for parking downtown Oklahoma City. I just think that we live in a society where things are moving in different directions, and true enough. But then there are some parts of our society, I think, that kind of remains the same as it relates to service and convenience. And I think that we sometimes jump, you know, get above a lot of people in our community as far as their ability to conceive and understand and process that information. And I, I mean, the old traditional parking meters worked just fine. You knew for a fact that you had 25 cents, a quarter, I'm going to say a quarter, a nickel, or a dime. And that was it. You didn't have to worry about whether that is going to take my credit card or my debit card. You didn't have to worry about whether that you was going to, you had a dollar or a $5 bill, and it was going to give you change or not. And it was just simple. Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion on that. Cast your vote. It passes unanimously. 8A3 is authorizing removal of four two-hour parking meters in Ward Six.
Move the items.
Second. Have a motion of second. Any comments? Cast your vote. It passes unanimously. Item B, C, D, D1 through D9, I believe, all pertaining to the TIF. Kathy O'Connor is going to give us a presentation on it. We will still vote these items separately, but her presentation will cover all of the items. So if you have any questions on those later ones, you need to ask them.
Good morning. I'm Kathy O'Connor with the Alliance for Economic Development. And as the Vice Mayor mentioned to you, we have a presentation this morning that goes over items 8B through 8D9. And all of these items are related to either changes to the TIF project plans for TIF Two and Eight, or allocations of funding, of TIF funding to specific development projects. So the first, the first thing that we're going to talk about is an amendment to the TIF Two and TIF Eight project plan, and consider $38.9 million in 10 different projects. Seven of those are infrastructure-related projects, including $26 million from the Devon Headquarters TIF District or TIF Eight for priority public improvements, an allocation to Oklahoma County for $4 million, an allocation for parking of $2.25 million, and three commercial and residential projects that we'll talk about this morning. Before we begin, we wanted to give you a little bit of background on our TIF districts. If you recall, we have eight different TIF districts that have been created by the city council. The most recent of those is the Devon Headquarters TIF District or TIF Eight. And really, the ones that we're focusing on this morning are TIF Two, which is the downtown TIF District and TIF Eight. Tax increment financing is a local redevelopment technique that's authorized under the Oklahoma State Constitution, which municipalities can use to fund specific public and private improvements to help make economic development happen. Tax increment financing allows a community to capture the increased property values that result from redevelopment in a blighted area. As I mentioned, TIF is authorized under the Local Development Act and the Oklahoma Constitution in Article 10, Section 6C. TIF districts can be created for up to 25 years. Our downtown TIF district was created in about 2000, so the clock is running on the downtown TIF district. And the taxing jurisdictions are a part of our process. The way that TIF districts are created and governed is by a TIF review committee. And the TIF review committee does have representation by each of the taxing jurisdictions that are affected by tax increment financing. So that means all of the different governmental agencies that receive a piece of the property tax pie sit on that tax increment review committee. For example, Oklahoma County, the Oklahoma County, I mean, the Oklahoma City Public Schools, City County Health, the libraries, Metro Tech are all a part of our TIF review committee. We have developed our own allocation process and procedures that we use to help make it clear to developers how we administer our TIF program. And the way that the process usually works is a developer comes to meet with me or with Brent, and we talk about the project and begin to discuss with the developer the kinds of information and background material that they will need in order to make an application for TIF funding. We then meet as the TIF advisory panel. And this is a group of city staff and myself that meet to analyze the project and discuss the pros and the cons and the details, and develop a recommendation that is then sent to the city manager, as far as to the amount of TIF funding that the project could qualify for. The project then is either reviewed first by the Devon Implementation Committee, if it's from TIF Eight, or by the Downtown MAPS TIF Review Committee. In the case of TIF Eight, if it goes to the Devon Implementation Committee, and then to the TIF Review Committee. For regular TIF Two projects, it just goes straight to the TIF Review Committee. And then it comes back to the city council for budget allocation. So that's what several of the items that you'll be considering today are for that budget allocation. We then draft an economic development agreement with the developer once council approves the allocation. And that agreement then goes to the Oklahoma City Economic Development Trust and to the city council. Little bit of background. As I mentioned, the Downtown MAPS Economic Development Project and Project Plan Area, or TIF Two, were created in March 2007. And the TIF was amended on December 17, 2008, to establish TIF District Number Eight, or the Devon World Headquarters TIF District. The first item on your agenda today was item B, and it is an amendment to the TIF Two project plan. What we are asking you today is to consider an amendment to the project plan budget for TIF Two, to increase the allocation for residential to $10 million. By $10 million, sorry. To date, we've allocated $16.1 million, and we have a remaining balance of $13.9. And the next category that we're asking you to increase is the hotel retail commercial category. We're asking for an increase of $10 million to that category. We've allocated $20.2 million to date. A great deal of that was allocated for the Skirvin Hotel. And we have a $9.8 million balance. And then we have another request for other public developments to increase that by $5 million. What this indicates, or why we are requesting this change today, is because TIF Two has performed better than originally anticipated when it was created in 2000. We're seeing better gains in property tax values and the ability to allocate more money to projects. And we believe that we will continue to receive requests for projects and are beginning to see more commercial projects that we hadn't seen in the past, instead of just all residential. We've done a lot of residential projects. So I think there's some really encouraging things going on in downtown Oklahoma City. And the success of the TIF Two is really one of those indicators. The other amendment that's included in the project plan amends the TIF Eight budget. And this, we've gone through these changes with you in the past and made presentations about Project 180 and the changes to the Project 180 budget. So the first amendment is to change the redevelopment framework category to $121 million. In the original project plan, it was $115 million. The next category was economic development. We're asking you to decrease that allocation from $40 million to $24 million, and to decrease the allocation to the other taxing jurisdictions from $20 million to $12 million. Overall, the budget for TIF Eight is being reduced from $175 million to $157 million. And as we've discussed in the past, some of the reasons for that were that we did not receive as much cash from the sales tax portion of the TIF District. So we had to borrow additional money for some of the improvements, or we will borrow it once we issue the bonds. And that required a reduction in the overall budget, just because of the cost of borrowing and timing. Some of the other changes that are in the project plan is a clarification to what other economic development means. Originally, the economic development category was only defined in the Devon Implementation Agreement, that is between the city and the Urban Renewal Authority and Devon. And we felt that because the project plan is the document that we use to govern the TIF District, and it lasts the entire 25 years of the TIF District, that it was better that that definition go into the project plan. And finally, the other change is to develop, it includes a process for eliminating the Devon Implementation Committee. The Devon Implementation Committee was created so that Devon, as the lender of the original interim financing on the project, had approval of those priority public improvements. So the implementation committee met and would approve the contracts, the change orders, all of the different items. Well, as we wrap up Project 180 and those public improvements, there really isn't a need for the Devon Implementation Committee anymore. And we will go to the process that we usually use with the TIF Review Committee and the city council, and, you know, not have that step for the Devon Implementation Committee anymore. So that pretty much wraps up the changes to the project plan. Now, we're going to get into some of the changes, some of the allocations to specific projects that are on your agenda today. The first one is the downtown sidewalk project, and this is item C on your agenda. Originally, we had allocated, or we had, the city council had approved an allocation of $400,000 for a downtown sidewalk project. And we were, we had planned to use that as to leverage a federal grant that we did not receive. So what we are asking for is to increase that allocation slightly to $500,000, and to help us, so that we can use that money to complete sidewalk projects that maybe don't, aren't in the Project 180 area or aren't in a geo bond project. There's several areas in downtown Oklahoma City where there's gaps in the sidewalks, just like there are all over the city. And so we are looking for areas where we can complete the sidewalks and continue our emphasis on creating a more pedestrian-friendly environment. The downtown tax increment review committee approved this project in December. And if we go to the next slide, we have some examples, if you can see, of places where the sidewalks are either in pretty bad shape or need to be fixed or filled in so that we can create a more pedestrian-friendly environment. So that's project C. The next project on the, for your consideration, is item D1. And this is the Century Center Commercial Project. A developer purchased the retail portion of the Century Center in May 2012 and requested TIF assistance in September. If you, if you're familiar with the Century Center, there are two levels of commercial space on the first and second floor of that building. COTBA owns the parking that is below ground, two levels of parking below grade, and two levels of parking above the commercial space. So the developer has purchased just the retail space, not the parking. So the project is, the developer plans to make a $27 million investment in about 100,000 square feet of commercial space. There will be room for commercial, retail, restaurant development on the first floor. And he also intends to add two floors of additional parking, or an additional 400 parking spaces above the COTBA garage. And they are in the process of negotiating with COTBA on the purchase of COTBA's airspace in order to construct those 400 parking spaces. Staff has recommended assistance in the form of $2.1 million in development financing assistance, and a low-interest loan of $800,000 towards this project. And this project was approved by the TIF Review Committee in December also.
On the $2.1 million, that's not an application to the TIF program, I mean, from the developer?
Yes. The $2.1 million is TIF funding to the developer. And then there will also be an $800,000 loan from the TIF to the developer as well that will be repaid.
And the expected return, has that been projected in reference to the revenues, that, of the revenue return?
Yes. We, all of these requests are evaluated and based upon having all of the TIF allocation returned back to the TIF District before the expiration of the TIF District in 2026. So we always look at that, and that's always a part of the consideration before we bring something to you for approval. These are some images of the project. The one on the lower side of the page is what the Century Center looks like today. And the upper image is a rendering of what the redeveloped project will look like. The project includes reskining the building, completely changing it, putting it, making a much more active pedestrian front on the building, making it much more interesting, and then adding the two levels of parking, which makes it a little bit more substantial building than it is now. The next project is the Bricktown Infrastructure Project, and we are requesting an allocation of $750,000 to improve the, just general infrastructure in the Bricktown area. There's a need for us to take a look at sidewalks, lighting, irrigation, landscaping, kind of just all of the streetscape and public, improvements in the public environment in Bricktown. A great deal of those improvements, especially along the canal, were made in 1999 with the opening of the canal. So they're becoming a little worn and a little dated. And this allocation will allow us to do quite a bit of improvements and improve the experience for visitors and residents in Bricktown. Here are some examples of some of the problems that we're having in Bricktown. Just painting, paving, sidewalks, lighting, all of those kinds of things that we think are needed and will help with Bricktown. The next project is the parking garage renovation project that requests an allocation of $1 million. And this supports renovations that will be made by COTBA to the Santa Fe Garage and the Century Center Garage. And we talked a little, we just talked about the Century Center improvements that are going to be made by a private developer. But the garage spaces that are still owned by COTBA at the Century Center are in need of some rather significant repairs. And so this allocation will help to pay for those and the repairs that are planned at the Santa Fe Garage. They include things like elevator improvements, helping COTBA pay for its portion of the new panels that will go on the exterior of the Century Center, and the new exterior that goes on the Santa Fe as well. And this was also approved by the TIF Review Committee in December. The next project is a request by Oklahoma County to make renovations to its parking garage at Hudson and Robert S. Kerr. If you were If you recall, in the project plan, we have allocations for the other taxing jurisdictions that are a part of the budget in the project plan. And we've used these to help fund things like the downtown elementary school, some improvements for Metro Tech, things like that. But this is the first request that we've received from Oklahoma County for funding. And they've requested $1,250,000 to help repair their parking garage. And it includes, there's some deteriorated concrete, some reinforcement that's needed, ceiling joints, those kinds of things, waterproofing that will help extend the life expectancy The next request is for a residential project in the old Mitiki Building that's in Bricktown. This building is located north of Spaghetti Warehouse along Main and Oklahoma. In October of 2012, the developer requested TIF assistance to help with the renovation of this building. The building includes the redevelopment of about 132,000 square feet of vacant space into 30 residential units. And one of the interesting things about this project is it is the first project that we've received, or request that we've received for TIF funding to renovate one of the old warehouses in Bricktown into residential. And we really think that this is something that we need more of, and we hope that it's an extremely successful project. The agreement will include a clawback feature in case the apartments are converted to condominiums so that we would get a return on the TIF allocation if the units are sold as condominiums. And that allocation was for $500,000. Here's a, here's some pictures of the Mitiki Building today and kind of what it looks like inside, so. The next project is the Cottage District Alleyway Project, and this is an allocation of $500,000. For several months, we've been working with property owners in the Cottage District who are beginning to develop single-family homes. And the Cottage District is located between Northwest 4th and 9th Street, between Francis and Hudson roughly. Many of these houses are built with alleyway access. The garages or parking are accessed from the alleyway and not from the street. And in fact, the downtown design ordinance prefers that type of access for these developments. So, we've received some requests from the people who are developing these homes to improve the alleys in the area. So, what we've developed is a process that would include a property owner making an application. They would have to make a minimum investment of $500,000. They would have to have approval of the adjacent property owners, and it would be done on a block-by-block basis. So, we've, we've tried to develop some criteria that help the property owners determine if their project qualifies or not. And again, this, there's really four blocks right now that we believe qualify for this project. Some of the other, in this area, some of the other alleys have been closed. So, obviously, we, we're not proposing to reopen those. But there are areas where the alleys are in pretty bad shape, and we believe this would help spur additional residential development in that area. The next project is a request from TIF 8. And the next, actually, the next two requests are from TIF 8. And this is for improvements to the Oklahoma County Annex Building for renovation, renovations of that building. The request is for a $4 million allocation. And as I mentioned earlier, if you remember, the TIF 8 budget includes a $12 million allocation for public improvements for the other taxing jurisdictions. The county has requested help with this project to help remove asbestos in the building, upgrade the heating and air conditioning, upgrade electrical, lighting, and develop new space utilization in the, in the, in the building. It contemplates that we will reimburse the county for their expenses as they occur. And it also has been improved by both the tax, the TIF Review Committee and the Devon Implementation Committee. Here's some images of some of the things in the county annex building that are in need of repair. The next item is an allocation of $26 million that is, again, this is a project that we've talked about in the past. It is the final budget allocation for Project 180. In the past, the council has approved allocations of up to, that totaled $95 million. This one allocates another $26 million to complete Project 180. It supports the $176 million Project 180 budget that you approved in December. And it also has been approved by the TIF Review Committee and the Devon Implementation Committee. This does provide us funding to move forward with Streetscape Packages 6 and 7, renovation to the area on the east side of City Hall, and a couple of other projects that are public improvement or public pedestrian spaces. The final project that we have this morning is a project for the Oklahoma Publishing Company. And it is a request for an allocation of $1.5 million from the other economic development category that is a part of TIF 8. This is the first of these allocations that we've received and the first one that you've been asked to consider. The Oklahoma Publishing Company has sold its headquarters building on the Broadway Extension and must relocate by December 2015. They have identified that they would like to relocate to the Century Center project, the same Century Center project that we just talked about a minute ago. And they plan to make significant tenant improvements to that building and other kinds of purchases of furniture, fixtures, and equipment in order to make their move to downtown. We believe that this project is a catalyst to make the Century Center project successful. It brings a major employer to downtown Oklahoma City, which is really the purpose of that other economic development category in TIF 8. It was designed to relocate jobs to the downtown, preferably headquarters jobs, and jobs that paid well and created the kind of downtown environment that we're all trying to achieve. The funding, the $1.5 million will be used to offset their tenant improvements and will be paid to them on a reimbursement basis. What we have asked for them, as we've negotiated, is a 10-year occupancy guarantee and a clawback feature that burns off 10% over that 10-year period, 10% a year over the 10-year period. Some of the capital improvements they plan to make include large electronic message displays on the outside of the building, a great deal of furnishings, computers, other kinds of equipment inside the building that are above and beyond the typical tenant improvements that their developer plans to make. We have projected that this project will generate about $1.3 million in sales and property tax revenues for the city over a 10-year period. And those are just the direct revenues, not any calculation of the indirect revenues that are, that are achieved by moving 350 employees to the downtown and having them here and shopping and eating out and the things that all of us do while we're here. So, we think this is another very good project and request your consideration.
Kathy?
Yeah.
The 10 years, is that, 10 years that they will be in the building or committed to be downtown Oklahoma City?
Yes.
For the lease of the, or whatever the, is it a lease or a purchase?
They will be leasing space in the building. And separate from that lease, we have asked for a 10-year occupancy guarantee.
Okay. So, so the lease then is for 10 years, and then we got a guarantee of additional 10 years?
No, it's the same 10 years.
The same 10 years?
Yeah.
Kathy, well, on, in the discussion related to the Oklahoma County Annex Building, you talk about $12 million being set aside for public developments. In addition to the county, the public library or the Oklahoma City Public Schools could request funding from this TIF?
Yes.
Are there any other organizations that could request that public?
City, county, health, the library system, as you mentioned, the VOTEX, library, county.
City, county, health, library, Oklahoma County, school district.
VOTEX.
That's it.
Do those public institutions have to demonstrate an economic benefit to request that funding?
No.
No. That's a great point you bring up, because I think it's really important. We've got two areas here. One are public improvements. And those public improvements are the alleys that we're building, it's the improvements to the garages that we own, it's improvements to the county annex building, it's improvements to the, to the county garages. Those are, particularly for the county, those are because they are the typically taxing agencies. And when this TIF was built up, they would typically get the revenues off the, the ad hoc property taxes. And in lieu of that, we set aside monies to fill that void, if you will. On the private side of things, and we've had several of those this morning, I want to comment on that for a minute, because we look at those very, very carefully. This isn't just a blanket grant program that's out there. We look at the performance on each of those projects that are coming down the line, and we believe that without the TIF involvement, they would not happen. It's the but if. But if for the TIF investment being there, they would not happen. Now, there's no guarantees on that. But we look at them, and we believe that with the rate of return that they're looking at and the investment that they're making, it wouldn't happen because of the additional difficulties of developing downtown. It's the parking requirements that they've got, they've got to do. It's additional things. But to get the density downtown, which is a goal of ours to happen, we have to, at this point in time, on some projects, provide some assistance to it. It's our goal that hopefully downtown will become so vibrant and the rates will be such that that, you know, that that won't happen at some point in time. We're not there yet. And to do that, we look at each of those individually. And each of those also, we look at the rate of return that we're going to get on that investment that we're making to make sure that it adequately repays the TIF dollars. So, those are very tightly scrutinized as we go forward. Then, after staff reviews them, they go to Devon, or the TIF Review Committee, which all the taxing agencies have a seat at the table there where it's reviewed. And then it goes on to the Economic Development Committee, where Mr. Ryan and Mr. Mackerty generally had a couple of provisions do it as we go on down the line. And so, it's, it's, there's, there's quite a bit of process involved.
But, but the fact that the city doesn't receive property tax revenue, we couldn't use any of the TIF money for a city-owned facility, or could we?
In TIF 2, there was allocations for public improvements, for public projects. And so, the city could receive an allocation. It isn't a part of this allocation for the other taxing jurisdictions. We don't, we don't take any money for city projects from that budget category. But there were categories for other public improvements in TIF 2 that we used to-
And those include-
Improvements at the river, for example. And most of those, we do look at, will they have an economic development benefit for us in the long term? They're not, we have a different standard for ourselves.
Hey, one more question. If we could shift back to the earlier part of your presentation about allocating another $10 million to hotel, retail, and commercial development? You know, there's a, at least a couple of new hotels being planned or under construction now in the Bricktown area. Have any of the hotels in the Bricktown area received any of the incentives from the TIF?
No.
Okay. Well, my final question related to this, so this would focus more on the, or would it, hotel retail development, say, in the core part of downtown, in the central business district?
I mean, I'm not going to preclude that we wouldn't be presented with a great mixed-use development in Bricktown that we might want to make an allocation to. So, I think, you know, what we're really looking for in that allocation are mixed-use projects that incorporate retail, commercial, office, maybe some residential that we can evaluate. But, but the limited-service hotel development in Bricktown has not been eligible, or, actually, they haven't asked for any TIF allocations in most cases.
Well, I would like to, not that I have any input on this, but, you know, at least keep some monies back if we can ever develop a retail area in the commercial business district, especially once the Oklahoma City Boulevard is completed. To have it adjacent to, or just west of, say, the proposed side of the convention center, I think would make great use of this money. And I guess we need to get Russell's input too on, on, you know, the planning for the development along the Boulevard. But I would like to see that kind of funds set aside. Thank you.
Mayor, Jim, in your analysis of the, of the, these allocations, you said that this is not a grant program. How does it differ from-
Well, it is a grant program, but it's just not a general grant. It's a grant program with a lot of, lot of provisions and strings attached.
But aren't most grant programs, don't they have, that's why some people don't get them, because they have all those provisions in them that keep you from getting them.
But the point is, there's a lot of folks that come in and ask for money that we, that don't fall in the provisions that we say not do. That's maybe the point. Maybe I missed-
I understand that, but I, but it is really very little different than a grant program. I mean, if, if you want a grant to build something or to fund a project, you file a grant, you file an application, and they look over your application. And if you don't meet all their criteria, you don't get the money. And the same thing's happening here, I think. Is that right?
Okay. I had a question, again, early in the, in your presentation, Kathy, that had to do with the TIF Review Committee. That's the committee that's made up of all the different taxing entities. What, how much power and authority do those committees have?
Well, they make recommendations to the city council. They don't have any final approval authority.
So, if, for instance, Oklahoma County didn't like what we were doing, and their vote was no, that would just be a committee recommendation that contained a no vote?
Right.
We could do it without them?
Yes.
We could do it without the school board? We could do it without the library? Without any, without any, we could do it by ourselves?
Yes.
Okay. Which one of these TIF districts is the oldest?
The Health Center TIF District was created first.
And how, and when was it created?
It's really only about six months older than the downtown TIF district.
It's like 13, 14 or 14 years.
Okay, so we're not close yet to having seen what's going to happen at the end?
That's correct.
That's correct.
Or about half a year.
We're already, you know, we're already taking the end into consideration, though.
No, I understand, I heard that, that's why I asked the question. Another question that came to me was that, when you're talking about the balances that remain in TIF 2 after the requested amended allocation, are those balances of actual cash still left in the fund?
They're, they're a budget balance. So, they're just, they're, the money is not there in a, in a bank account somewhere, it's just a budget amount. So, we budgeted $25 million originally for residential development. We have $13.9 million left in the budget.
In the budget.
In the budget, not in cash funds on hand.
So, some of those may actually reflect either an increase or a decrease in the amount of money that we receive based on our initial projections then? Is that fair?
Right. And all, all of the changes in TIF 2 are increases in the budget allocations that reflect that the TIF district is doing, is performing better financially than what we originally anticipated.
The last question I had, actually, it's more of a comment than it is a question. You know, especially when you're talking about large structures, buildings, most of the time, the people that build those are very proud of the fact they built them. And someplace on the building, there's a, there's a plaque or a cornerstone or something that talks about who built it. Is any thought ever being given to the, putting a plaque up that said, "This is built by the taxpayers of Oklahoma City"? I mean, really, that's, that's what's happened. This is tax money that's going into the, I'm not objecting to it, I'm going to vote for all these things. But in, in, in an effort to be realistic about it, it would be nice, especially in the, in the case of the newspaper, to have a sign on their building that said, "This building was partially constructed by the taxpayers of Oklahoma City."
I think that's something we can request in the future.
I mean, I'm not, I don't mean that snarky, I just think, it sounds kind of snarky, though, since I called, since I said that about the paper, but I- Especially since I called, since I said that about the paper. But I do think there has been this love-hate relationship between the newspaper for a long time. I mean, we'd be, that'd be the 900-pound gorilla in the room, or the elephant. The 900-pound gorilla's not in the room, is it? The elephant's in the room. The 900-pound gorilla's just there in the argument somewhere. I've got to get my, anyway. I do think that situation exists, but they're not alone. I mean, we're talking about Midiki, we're talking about, I see Marva there, we see there's, that kind of money has gone into the Seber. I mean, I don't see anything wrong with-
Some kind of acknowledgement.
With some recognition of that. The Skirven is a good example of that. Again, it's just a thought.
Do you apply to recognize a TIF participation?
Well, you know, I see all these things. I'm kind of into all that kind of stuff. You get as old as I am, you're trying to figure out how, want to make sure everybody remembers something, but especially because my memory is starting to slip a little bit. But I just think it would be nice, it would be fair to put those kind of things out there because that's where a great deal of this money is coming. And if, in fact, we're right about the fact, they would not be there but for this money, then that's even more of a reason to recognize that that's where some of this money came from.
Mayor?
Kathy, a couple of questions if I could, ma'am. You made the statement that the one reason we're increasing the budget was because these TIF districts were doing better. Would you just explain for our viewers what doing better entails?
It means that development in downtown has, has occurred at a rate faster than what we originally anticipated and at creating property values in excess of what we originally anticipated. And so when property hap, when development happens more quickly and the value of that development is higher, it creates additional revenues for the tax increment financing district.
Okay, and then off of that same thing, talking, what Pete was talking about, about taxpayer involvement. If I'm a taxpayer and I live outside of the downtown area and don't own property down here, all right, the monies that are used to finance these taxing increment districts are not coming from me. They're coming from the increased property values on the properties within the district. Is that not true?
That's correct. Within the increment district.
Within the increment district. And so there's no general fund sales tax dollars going in behind this. It's just the property tax, the increment, within the increment district, that's used to fuel the funding of these.
We do have some sales tax TIF districts that do allocate sales tax dollars that are generated by that project. For example, there's a sales tax TIF district associated with the Skirven, but those are not general fund sales tax revenues that would go into the general budget. One of the things I do think we need to say is that when we analyze these projects, we look very closely at the property tax revenues that these individual projects generate and we, and the allocations that they receive are based upon their own tax payments, not necessarily tapping into the larger growth in assessed values downtown, if that makes any sense. So we, we take a pretty conservative look at these projects and you can ask some of the developers that are in the room. They typically don't get as much money as they ask for and we take a very, very close look at the time value of money and all of those kinds of considerations and they only get an allocation based upon the taxes they generate.
Look, I would, I would just beg to differ a little bit with the, with the position that they're not tax money, that they don't, if you live at, in Windsor Hills, you're not paying for that because you are. Because the money that would have gone to the library that might have serviced Windsor Hills is going into a building downtown. Is that not right?
Potentially. I do think we, in the downtown TIF district especially, we have to remember, and this is, this is kind of complicated, we have direct projects and indirect projects. And if, if a project does not receive any assistance from the city through this process or just the natural growth in assessed values, a half of that amount is allocated back to the other taxing jurisdictions. So they are seeing a benefit, and actually a much greater benefit, in the growth in property taxes that's happening in the rest of the community.
I'm not arguing that they're not receiving a benefit. Now, what I'm saying is that tax dollars from everyone, everybody that lives in Oklahoma County that benefits from the Oklahoma City County Library System would, is a contributor to the Midiki Building if that's what happens.
You could look at it that way.
Is that it, Pete?
Just a couple of questions. On the taxing jurisdictions, so the amount allocated to those taxing jurisdictions will now be 12 million?
In TIF 8.
In TIF 8.
Yeah.
And those have to be spent on projects within the TIF district?
They have to be spent within the project area of the TIF district. And the project area is slightly larger than the increment area. Actually, it's quite a bit larger. It goes from Northwest 13th Street to Southwest 27th, I-235 to Classen and Western. So it's a pretty big district and incorporates an area generally considered south of downtown.
So if city county health, for example, wanted to access these funds, they would have to spend it on a project within that area?
Right.
So this is, what, five and a half million going to the county if we approve all these?
It's $4 million for, from TIF 8 and $1,250,000 for their-
Okay, so how, at the 12 million, how much will be left after today?
There'll be 8 million in TIF 8 left.
Okay. The 10 million that's being increased for the hotel, that can be used for the convention center hotel, is that correct?
It could be.
Okay. I just, all of it or some of it or just, I mean, is that-
All of it, some of it, yes.
Is there an intent or is there, is that just a possibility?
I think it's just a possibility. I think it could be one of the funding sources that we use to help make the convention center hotel happen, but it will probably be one of several that we'll have to use.
The, I guess the one question I have is what is our threshold? If we're opening this up to tenant improvements, what is our threshold for such improvements? Mr. Calhoun said that this wouldn't happen, or use the term but if or but for. You use the term that these are above and beyond tenant improvements. If I, if I want to open a medical office and the landlord gives me an allowance, $200,000 for a build-out, and I want to do an above and beyond office, above and beyond tenant improvements, well, it seems I have a choice of either paying for that or scaling down my tenant improvements. So here, we're building, I don't know, a billboard on the outside of the building that's, I don't know how many feet, but enormous, lavish. I guess the question is, are we, are we financing tenant improvements that would allow something to happen but for the intervention? Or are we financing lavish tenant improvements which are not necessary? I mean, I don't, I don't believe that Opubco's not going to come downtown with or without this one and a half million. I think they are. But, you know, if this is, if this is improvements that are going to improve downtown, it's going to be a great experience for the pedestrian, it's good that pedestrians that walk by are going to be able to see this billboard, see into the building. I understand that argument, but what is the threshold in the future for tenant improvements that are, as you said, above and beyond?
Well, first of all, the allocation for Opubco is coming from a category called other economic development. And really, the criteria for that category are related more to job creation than investment in the building or in property. We tie it back to that because we want to see that investment. We want to see that they do generate tax revenues. But I really think that the definition that's in the project plan talks about job creation and creating high-quality jobs in downtown Oklahoma City. So when we look at projects that might be eligible for that other economic development category, what we're going to be looking for are companies that are going to create a headquarters presence, significant numbers of new jobs in downtown Oklahoma City. To improve the accountability for the TIF funding, we have tied it to tenant improvements or we've, you know, we've, we've associated it with that because those kinds of things are what creates tax revenues. So in the case of Opubco, they plan on investing, I believe, about $3 million in addition to the money that might be set aside in their lease for tenant improvements. And we've, we've basically tied it to that just to improve the accountability for the TIF dollars.
Do we, is there property tax on the items that they purchase that then refinances the TIF, that gets paid back to the TIF?
Yes. Personal property taxes on, on business equipment, all their computers, their furnishings, like you just mentioned, the electronic message display that they plan to put on the exterior of the building. All of those things are subject to property taxes and to sales taxes.
Do you have a list of the sidewalks that you're, for the $500,000 that you're planning on?
We do not have a list at this date. We'll be developing that.
So it's just a-
It's a, it's an allocation of funding. It's just a budget allocation, basically. And then we'll, we'll come back with specific projects to be completed.
And how do you prioritize those? How do you pick which sidewalks?
Well, I imagine what we'll be looking for are places where there are no sidewalks, where there's like a gap in the sidewalk, or the sidewalks are in very bad shape. And, you know, the priority will be, you know, as we find them and the worst ones and connecting along major corridors to major venues.
Any other questions from council?
On the residential development, how many units will this, is it, do you have any information as to, of the 30 residential units, how many of these will be at rate and how many will be at a lower cost of, of living for individuals? Is there any plan to make this affordable housing to any of the units?
We are in discussions, I'd have to ask Andy or Marva to come up and talk a little bit about that, but this project does contemplate having units that are slightly below what the current market is for residential in downtown. I don't know that they would technically meet the affordable housing criteria that HUD has in place, for example, but we are looking at trying to create more affordable units in downtown. And we have some other projects that are in the, in the works that will have an affordable component.
Well, I would like for us to seriously consider, you know, I mean, I can support the project, but I do have a concern as it relates to who would be able to afford to live in these units. And I think that's becoming a growing question with a lot of individuals that, you know, are we creating a, a one-income dimensional, you know, downtown housing? And it, you know, I, I just think if we, if we as a city is going to participate in the financing of these type of projects, we ought to clearly ask for some transparency as it relates to the affordability of individuals to have an opportunity to, to, to live downtown, contrary to some of the other housings downtown.
We share your concern and we are working with several developers to begin to develop more truly, you know, HUD-qualified affordable housing in downtown Oklahoma City.
Thank you. And my other question is, on the alleyway project, I hate to refer to it as alley, but the, would this be a project that's managed under our Public Works Department?
Yes. It'll be funded by the TIF and then the work will be completed through contracts administered by Public Works.
So who's making the application for this? Is this, and is this not something that the city should have been attentive to and-
Typically, alleys are-
Or is this a private issue?
Alleys are typically a private issue and we're looking at this as, as a private issue, so the private developers or homeowners will come to us and make the request. It is public right-of-way, so we can use Public Works and the Public Works contracting process to make the improvements, but the funding will come from the TIF district, not from any city general kinds of revenues or geo bond funds.
So is there new development in this area?
Yes, there are. There's several houses that have either been built or are under construction.
And the developers that are continuing as relates to new projects, it is their request then that these, these alleys, their fairways or alleys be opened up for new paving?
Mm-hmm.
Is that right? Okay. How much are they putting into this?
They don't, other than the investment that they're making in their own home or in the home that they're building, they don't make an investment in the alley itself, in the, in the construction of the alley itself. But they have to make a minimum of a half a million dollar investment in the redevelopment of a piece of property.
But as they go forward with the development, when they build a new house, then they're creating a new alley, right?
No, the alleys are already there. All of the alleys are already there.
All the alleys are there.
Yes, they're already platted. They, they're there, just for the most part, they're in very, very bad shape.
Well, historically, who would have been responsible for maintaining the infrastructure of the alleys? Would it have been the city or would it have been the city?
Or the property owners. I mean, it's kind of-
First of all, there aren't that many alleys in Oklahoma City.
Right.
If you take a look at it from a global scale. But generally, if they were paved, it would have been the city's responsibility to maintain them. Some of these are partially paved, not, some are paved all the way in pretty bad shape. You're seeing a variety of things out there.
Okay. I just want to make sure when I go to Ward 7 and looking for some alleys, I need to touch a brush.
There aren't very many.
Actually, I think prior to the, to when we stopped picking up trash in the alleys, the city's probably maintained them. That's my guess. You know, they used to be utilized all over town and when they were utilized for that purpose, I think the city was, was the, maintained the alleys. I do have one more comment. I've been, I've, I've sat here a long time and I don't think I have ever seen all three county commissioners in this room at the same time, ever, in the time I've been here.
They are all here.
I would, I would be remiss not to, not to recognize that all three of them are here and how much we appreciate you do across the street because without the cooperation of the county, we wouldn't be where we are and we appreciate it very much, all three of them.
I have one other question. On the, Pete reminded me that I had another question on the Oklahoma County Annex Building.
Mm-hmm.
And when we say the annex, because I think some people are confused as to what is the county's building, is this the, where the courtrooms are and then where the court clerk's offices? This the, the, the project that we're referring to or are we talking to, talking about the building to the, to the east?
Put the picture up there. I think we had, no, okay, I thought we had a, it's-
We have one that I distinguish, all three of them are here.
North, okay. It's the building to the north.
Building to the north.
Yeah.
Are there any plans to address the, the building to the east?
I think you've already worked, been working on that one, haven't you?
It has been worked.
Do you want to come up and talk about that? I'm not an expert on what their building plans are, so.
Councilman, I think you may be talking about the Investors Capital Building.
Yes.
Which is immediately east of the Annex Building.
Yes, sir, Mr. Bond.
Yes, we have some plans to do some renovations in there as well, but not with these funds.
So it's not with these funds?
No, no, sir.
Because if it was with these funds, I was going to make the mercy request that you all at least open it up so we could go across from one building to the other without having to go outside of the courthouse, then come back in.
That, we, we know that that would be a, a very convenient thing to do, but it's a, it's a security issue because that building is open on weekends and in hours that the courthouse building is not open. And it does not have, at this time, we don't have any sheriff's patrol in that building. So there would be access, if we do access from that building into the Annex, the Annex then into the courthouse, there would need to be security, which we currently don't have in place.
Okay. So it's more or less the sheriff's problem?
Yeah. Well, we, we all work together. I wanted to come in on the Councilman White's observation. It's a new day. I wanted to come in on Councilman White's observation. It's a new day. Thank you all.
Thank you, Mr. Vaughn.
Okay. As I said, we'll have to take these one at a time. We don't have any citizens that have signed up, but as we get to each one, if you have a question, be sure and let us know. First item is 8B, an ordinance clarifying and restating the amended and restated plan.
Move the item to second.
Motion to second. Any comments? Cast your vote, and passes unanimously. Item 8C is rescinding the allocation of the streetscape and reallocating to the sidewalk Any comment? Passes unanimously. 8D1 is the allocation for the Century Center Commercial Project.
Second.
Any comments? Passes unanimously. 8D2 is the allocation for the hotel retail commercial cost, a bricktown infrastructure project.
Move the item.
Any comments? Passes unanimously. Item 8D3 is the parking garage renovation project.
Move the item.
Any comments? Passes unanimously. 8D4 is for the county parking garage renovation. Any comments? Passes unanimously. 8D5 is the allocation for the Midiki Project.
I just asked, is the developer for this project here, is there a representative here?
Yes, yes, sir.
Would you...
Could you give us your name and address for the record, please?
Andy Burnett, 1609 Old Depot. This is Marva Ellard. She's my partner.
Marva Ellard, 1521 North Chertel Avenue.
Can you all make sure that we have a serious consideration as it relates to the question that I asked Ms. O'Connor?
Yes, sir. Actually, our rents are starting at $600 a month, so when you look at the average rents downtown being around $1,100, I feel like we are trying to hit a lower price point. There will be some higher rents in there as well. We hope to achieve a nice balance, but that was definitely the objective, is to hit a little bit lower price point.
So the rent will start at 600?
There will be units that will start...
There will be some units at 600.
Right around 600. And again, we're trying to finalize our numbers, but that was our first pass.
Well, I just want you to know that that's an issue that I have. I think it's an issue that several other members of the council has as it relates to the housing downtown. And I've been privy to one of your other projects. I think you guys are, you know, do a good job, and I just wanted to make sure that we have had an understanding of my concern and, of course, your commitment that you would, you know, work as diligently as possible to make sure that we have some fair base housing for citizens that if they wanted to live downtown, they would be able to have that opportunity based on where they work from the OU to downtown employment. And a lot of these individuals, they, you know, they don't have the high income, but they get up every morning, they go to work, and they would love to have a decent quality and convenient housing to serve them also, okay?
We share that objective.
Thank you, Mr. Vaughn.
How about a timeline, Marva? What are you looking at?
We're hoping to start construction middle of May to 1st of June, Councilman White, and hope to open it about that same time next year.
Thank you.
Andy, thank you.
Do we have a motion? Any other comments? Cast your vote, passes unanimously. 8D6 is the Cottage District Alleyway Project.
Move the item to second.
Any comments? Cast your vote, passes unanimously. 8D7 is the County Annex Building Project.
Move the item.
Any comments? Passes unanimously. 8D8 is the resolution on the, oop, infrastructure, yeah, reallocation for the development project.
Move the item.
Any other comments? Cast your vote, passes unanimously. And finally, 8D9 is the project for Opubco.
Move the item.
Any other comments? It passes unanimously. Welcome back to downtown. On to item 8E is an ordinance pertaining to the revocable permits in the Paseo District, actually rescinding that.
Yes, this is, as Dan Brummitt and I had previously discussed this with the council, this is currently a provision in the Neighborhood Conservation District Track 5, which is the Paseo zoning ordinance, and provides for no more than one revocable permit for a festival or event utilizing the public streets, et cetera, for the same time period. And this is the one that was in a district court case, and the judge previously indicated that he doesn't think it's legally valid, so we, and the city has not been following this provision for the last two years. And we would recommend that this be introduced and referred to the Planning Commission to repeal this, and that would then boot the case out if it's actually repealed.
They have motion to second. Any other comment?
Excuse me, I didn't understand Kenny's last part about planning.
Yes, this is a zoning change to the zoning code, so any zoning code change has to go to the Planning Commission. So what you're actually doing today is introducing it and referring it to the Planning Commission.
Any other comments? Cast your vote, passes unanimously. 8F1 is a public hearing on dilapidated structures. Do we have anybody here who wants to speak on dilapidated structures?
Move the item to second.
We have a motion to second. Passes unanimously. 8G1 is a public hearing on unsecured structures. Do we have anybody here to speak on unsecured structures?
Move the item to second.
We have a motion to second. It passes unanimously. 8H is a revocable right-of-way permit. 8H1 is for McNeely's Restaurant Group to hold the St. Patrick's Day Block Party. Do we have anybody here that wants to make a few comments on that?
Move the item to second.
Got a motion to second. Cast your vote, it passes unanimously. 8H2 is for the Red Bud Foundation for the Red Bud Classic, April 6th and 7th.
Move the item. Second. I have a comment. You should pay attention to the fact that we hold the streets of Oklahoma City, and we like to be ready.
Okay. Did you want to speak a little bit? Your name and address for the record, please.
Patty Anthony, 1708 Bedford Drive. I'm the vice director for the Red Bud Classic, and I just want to thank the council for welcoming us each year. This is our 31st year to serve the community with a fun fitness event, and we hope it all goes smoothly.
Well, we appreciate it. Did you catch Councilman Ryan's comments?
I think you can ensure that people are aware of the routes, road closures, and the associated events.
Yes, we plan to have a piece in the Daily Oklahoman in the insert on March 31 explaining the road closures, and we also have digital signs four days prior to the event announcing road closures.
You need to work with our police department?
Yes, I work with Major Hill.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Do we have a motion? Cast your vote, passes unanimously. 8I is the joint resolution that we had in MFA. Is that correct? So we do need executive session on this?
Yes.
Have motion to second? We have executive session on that. 8J, I understand we do not need executive session?
That's correct.
I need a second. That item is stricken. 8K is claims recommended for denial. Do we have anybody here to speak on claims recommended for denial?
Move the item to second.
Cast your vote, passes unanimously. Item 10 is claims recommended for approval. Anybody to speak on approval? Not very many people want to speak when they're getting money.
Move the item to second.
Passes unanimously. Item 10, I'm items from council. Ed, you want to start us off today? Okay. Larry? Nothing. Pete? Wow. Skip? Any items from council?
I would just like to mention, and of course acknowledging Ralph Ellison, that, you know, I listened to the presentation prior, and they were talking about the culture of a city and the soul of a city, and I really think that, you know, we should be more engaged in identifying and promoting the culture that exists in Oklahoma City. I had the opportunity to be at a program Sunday with Congressman Emanuel Cleaver from Missouri, and to enlighten him on the historical legacy of the African-Americans in Oklahoma City, and he was rather impressed and surprised that Oklahoma City has such a rich base of culture, from music to the arts, to literary, and we talk about Ralph Ellison, and here's a man that has transcended all over the world in reference to his talents and his writings, and yet we have a name on a library. But I think it's time that we start, you know, really highlighting in some type of arts or monuments of these individuals that the world should know, that the world know. And yet, and still, so many people have very little information that this man was born in Oklahoma City, Oklahoma, that he graduated from Douglas High School, and then all the other accomplishments is, you know, is something that a lot of people really don't know, and I think we should be the shadows of that and make it known that when you come to Oklahoma City, you come into a city that were someone that is worldwide known and a legacy in various ways that was born here in our city. And it was his home, didn't just, you know, come here and in and out. It was where the man went to school, his formal education, from first grade to graduation. And I think we need to start being a little bit more mindful of the iconic legacy of those individuals that is part of the soul, part of the culture of Oklahoma City, Oklahoma. And my other statement is, is that in closing out the Black History Month, which should be the American history every day, I would just like to say that we're coming up on an election on Tuesday. I think that people need to be mindful of the fact that the DNA of America has been as a result of the lives of individuals who fought for the right to go to the polls, who have been murdered, who have been beaten, who has been violated in every way that you can imagine, historically, for the basic fundamental rights to be recognized as a human being and part of the political process. As a result, we've come a long ways, but I would ask everybody to be mindful of the fact that voting is a serious issue. It is not a game. It is not something that we should play with, that it is the process that we have in America to participate and be a part of democracy. And I just ask everyone, don't let the game be that they're not going to do this, they're not going to go vote, they're just going to do this. We need to show the city of Oklahoma City, all over this city, that our municipal government is important, and that all politics are local, and you should be a part of that local engagement. Thank you.
David, did you have anything?
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. First of all, I'd like to thank Councilman Kelly for hosting a town hall meeting last week. It was as good of a town hall meeting that I've ever attended. A lot of great information was shared by Chief City, Jan Perry with YWCA and the Oklahoma Housing Authority, and I'm looking forward to hosting a similar one in a few months after, sometime after April 15, out in the south part of Oklahoma City. It's a very informative meeting. And then, second of all, I'd like to thank Councilman Shadie for hosting a workshop yesterday. We got to learn how to plan and put together bus routes, and very interesting learning the various constraints and issues that you look at when planning bus routes, as well as learning some information about the national trends in public transportation. And I know he'll want to say something about tonight's meeting, but, you know, weather will not be an excuse for not being there. So thanks, Councilman Shadie, for hosting yesterday's meeting and tonight's event. Thank you.
Pat?
Thank you, Your Honor. Just a couple of questions. Do we have any idea when the sidewalks are going to be completed on the Civic Center and City Hall?
I think the sidewalks are completed at the Civic Center.
Well, the Civic Center, there's some problems.
Across the street there are.
Across the street.
Right. We're working down...
As part of Councilman Kelly's appeal about to be more conscious of cultural events, there was a cultural event down there the other night, and people were really angry about the sidewalks still being torn up on the other side of the street. They couldn't walk to the parking lots.
Okay.
The second thing I'd like to ask about is, yesterday, in a lot of the neighborhoods in Ward 8, they picked up garbage, and as part of their program, they picked up recycled items as well. And the recycled boxes, after they were empty, were just thrown all over the streets and driveways, and it caused some traffic issues, and people were very upset about it. If we could make a comment to the people responsible for that to be a little bit more careful as they put those things back. And then we had some discussion this morning about the pedestrian-friendly environment we're trying to create downtown. And in conjunction with that, would we give any serious consideration to changing our walk signs to protect a person running across the street from all the traffic coming at them? I know we at one time suggested that, and we were told that we wanted to move traffic through the city as quickly as we could, and that would slow the traffic down. But our intent now is to slow the traffic down and make it more pedestrian-friendly, and I think in conjunction with that, we need to look at the use of those walk signs to see if we're doing as good a job as we possibly can. And then in terms of sidewalks, which is, I think, a pet interest of mine, several months ago, I asked for some consideration for sidewalks adjacent to and leading to the new Northwest Library, Patient Splatting Library, if you will. And I was told that we wanted to wait until the library was open and get a feel for where those people are walking from. And the library's been open for several months now, and I wondered if we couldn't put that project back on the top burner to look at those sidewalks going to the library.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Mayor, I do have one comment I could, yesterday, a committee of the Senate passed out a bill which is, will incrementally affect the city's ability to regulate smoking. It's not even close to what we really wanted originally, but it's incremental help, and I appreciate it. I wouldn't want to, when I talk about smoking, I can't pass that up without being complimentary of Governor Fallon for what she's doing in that regard. Commissioner Vaughn's here, and he's been out front on those issues also. Commissioner Vaughn's here and he's been out front on those issues also. And I, it appears that our only option, given the influence of the tobacco lobby at the legislature, is that we're going to have to do this incrementally and take it to both of the people. And it'll be 2014 before we can do that. But I don't think we can let, we can't let the issue wane, we can't let interest in it wane while we're doing that. There's another bill, Senator Holt has a bill which would eliminate smokers as a protected class. You know, it's hard to imagine, and I think most of us may have heard this before, but it is hard to imagine that in, under Oklahoma law, smokers are a protected class, like you're protected for freedom of religion. It's on the same category as gender discrimination or age discrimination. Smoking is a protected class. And if you want to, if you want to think of, about how powerful the tobacco lobby has been in the past and remains today, that's going to be a very tough bill to pass. They're going to fight that, they use an argument that people will lose their jobs because of it. We're all paying for it. I mean, to me, that's such a minor thing. If somebody lost their job because they're smoking, because it jacks up my health insurance rates, well, that's a choice they made. You know, the idea you can't, you know, in Oklahoma, you can fire somebody for being redheaded if you don't like it. But you can't fire somebody for, you can't refuse to hire or fire somebody for smoking unless, like we've done it with the fire department, we've negotiated into a union contract. But I don't think we can stop being vigilant about the problem. It's driving the cost of our health insurance up, one of the key factors in that, one of the key factors in the budget problems that communities are having all over the country is the cost of health insurance. And we just can't, we just can't let it pass without a comment. And I, again, I appreciate the governor's willingness to step out, even though that's, what, eighteen months away at least before we can do anything about it. Anyway.
David, I just want to thank you for that. And I would ask that the people come tonight, fortunately, the weather is going to cooperate with this, it looks like. I think in just a couple of hours, I think everyone could be brought up to speed in a very thorough fashion about where we are in public transportation, which frankly is at the end, I mean, dead last in terms of major American cities. And the reason for that, I think, is that there's some situations that are very unique to both Oklahoma and Oklahoma City. And we'll talk about those tonight. Many distinguished speakers, Roy Williams, the head of the chamber, will talk about transit, Doug Rex from ACOG will talk about the possibility of regional transit, Jared Walker, who wrote a book, Human Transit, is internationally acclaimed transit planner and very, very insightful and translates these concepts into language that everyone can understand and will speak. Hundreds of people have signed up on social media to come tonight. We'll see if that, how many people come with the weather. But I just encourage you, I think it would be very informative and helpful as we try and move forward. Thank you. There, excuse me, that's at the farmer's market at 311 South Klein. It starts at 6:30 and runs till 8:30. And also, I think, you know, a lot of these town halls, people are, well, this is great information, what do I do now? Actually, we're engaged in a study of our bus system by a consultant group called Nelson-Ni Guard, and they'll be there tonight. They'll have a booth at the back of the room and the public will be able to engage them. It's a little bit paradoxical and sad that everybody that will come will come by automobile because our transit service doesn't run at night. But those that are able to come can interface with them and give them feedback about what we like and don't like about our transit system. Because that study that will be completed here in the next couple of months, it will be very, very important to our future. Thank you.
Gary, may I just follow up on Ed's comment? Especially if you happen to know somebody with a physical disability or sight limitation or something like that who depends upon public transportation, the fact that we do not have buses that'll be running that time of the evening, if you could reach out to them and offer to take them to the meeting, that'd be so helpful. Councilman Shadie and I visited with the Heartland Council of the Blind a few weeks ago. And, you know, until you have more contact with certain individuals that depend on public transportation, it's easy to forget about them. But really, it would really be so helpful if you do know of somebody that has some limitations, including our senior citizens who prefer not to drive on their own at night, to call and offer to take them to the meeting. Because all those groups are impacted by public transportation. Thank you.
Mayor, I apologize, but I would be really disrespectful to what happened last Thursday with the presentation of the public safety forum. Our chief of police and his staff did an absolute awesome presentation on an issue that people don't like to talk about. And I'm going to say this because we need to start talking about it all over this city, and that is the infiltration and the continued growth of gangs and the youth violence that exist in Oklahoma City, Oklahoma. Ms. Jan Perry did an outstanding presentation on the causation of a lot of these issues as it relates to domestic violence, domestic abuse issues. And for the first time, I think, we have stepped out of the box and started a dialogue to educate our citizens all over this city about the issues that exist and that the death of these young children and the violence has been, you know, just gone wild. And I think that we talk about a lot of these projects, it's going to be twenty years before we see any degree of reality of it. And I support some of it. But I think we need to start talking about the projects that we can see a change tomorrow, that we can see some social issues and some programs that we can start putting funding and earmarking funding for our programs that is going to save the lives of some of these children and also make our communities more safer. And so, the presentation, I think, was just, I mean, everybody that was here, the numbers were small, but the information was great and it went back to the communities. And people were told how great the presentation was. And I think we need to start continuing this and start developing programs, if it's the boys and girls clubs, more of them in different parts of the city, if it's quality programs, and stop being so dependent upon the federal government to determine how we're going to create projects for our children in our community. And every time we have done that, we find ourselves at the end, standing at the door saying, we don't have any more money. When in fact, we have programs that we created under the MAPS projects. And if I look back, I would have said, you know, there's one project that I would have said no, and I'd have said yes if we're going to do it for programs specifically for a youth activity engagement. We need probably ten boys and girls programs in Oklahoma City. And I think you would see a difference overnight as it relates to some of these issues of kids dropping out of school, teen pregnancies, the youth violence. And it would change the landscape, a lot more so than some of these other projects that we talk about that we're going to be twenty-five, twenty years before we even see some of the real benefits out of it. But I just want to thank the chief and thank Mr. Martin for, did I get it right? For being here and the statistical information that they provided to put on their program. And when the next one is held, you know, I think everybody needs to make every attempt they can to be there because it's great. And I know that's a sensitive issue. And I know the issue of youth violence and guns is a sensitive issue simply because of guns. But I don't think there's nobody that supports the Second Amendment, that supports a thirteen-year-old having any type of weapon to inflict harm on anyone. And so, these are the issues that we have in our society and in our community. And I just commend our staff and our police department for doing what they have done to start addressing this issue. And I think the burden is on us as a council to find the resources and to work with the programs and the partnership with private, you know, entities to try to elevate a different level of engagement as we go forward in addressing these issues. Thank you, Mayor.
The manager reports.
We have Commissioner Brian Mon here this morning to talk about the Shine Program. Commissioner?
Mayor and council, I'll make this brief. First off, I want to thank on behalf of the county commissioners for approving the TIF money that you just gave us, where I'm sure you put that to good use. I have Brandy Johnson here as my community relations director, and she will be presenting you with packets along with what you'll see on there. Councilman McAtee and I discussed a few weeks ago about presenting a report to you because the Shine Program, as you well know, has been very dependent on an installment of $25,000 per quarter from the council, which you've generously given to us, until which time we've been able to get up and be self-sufficient. With the bill that we passed the legislature last year, this ultimately, we hope, will be funded exclusively by the offenders themselves. The judges can assess them a $25 up to $250 fee. The fee for that, however, is paid in order of the number of fees that were created, and we are unfortunately last. And so, it'll take a while before those fees are completely collected. And as you may or may not know, offenders can almost in every case make payments. And so, they are paying out their fees. So, in addition to the fact that we get paid last, they're paying out their fees and they pay each fee in order of chronological order first. So, it is not proportional. So, whenever we get the fees for our fee, it's last and it's when they've paid everything else above that fee, just to be clear. So, I appreciate very much the vision of this council. And I want to thank Councilman White for originally helping orchestrate this deal. And before that, Councilman McAtee was very helpful in trying to get us the paint because as the law requires, we can do a number of these functions, but we cannot pay for the materials. So, we've had a very co-dependent relationship with Oklahoma City and it's been a fantastic partnership. And you applauded us earlier, Councilman White, about the relationship between the county and the city. And I just want to echo it back to you that we're very appreciative of the leadership of the city. We just have a few of the slides that we'll show you. And of course, we always give credit to public defender Bob Rabbitts, who helped come up with the concept of this. This really was an attempt to reduce the jail population, the Oklahoma County Jail, where we, of course, house the city inmates as well. And what we have done is, and in cases of some instances, we have reduced it to as much as 200 per day of our averages that we have recently seen in recent years. But a few months ago, the county jail population fell below 1,900. That has not happened in years, if maybe even ever since the inception of county jails. So, it's a huge improvement. And while they were expecting the healthcare increase of our premiums to go up 16%, we were able to successfully renegotiate the contract for only a 3% increase because we have staved off enough of those working in this program and another alternative sentencing program, such as the GPS bracelets and different things that are really helping save the cost because that does come out of our general fund dollars and it is very expensive to the county. Approximately about $450,000 a month for the healthcare of the county inmates. Out of our $71 million annual budget, that represents over 6 million right off the top. So, it starts to put a strain on us in a hurry. When we originally started this deal, as we know from working with you, that we worked on graffiti, which Councilman Kelly accurately points out is a big problem with the gangs. They use that for messaging. And it's important that we get on it right away. Some of the stuff that's been there forever is not actually containing a message anymore. It's those recent taggings that are very, very problematic for criminal defense. And Chief City has been a big partner with us and we take pictures of all of that and we have helped lead to the conviction of several people because it's like calligraphy. And they have such a great gang unit that they're able to help determine a lot of those pictures that the Shine Crew takes and sends over there on a daily basis. But we expanded this to school parks and neighborhoods. This is just an example behind one of the smallest elementary schools, Prairie Queen Elementary. This was an alley. And as the manager pointed out a while ago, there are not very many of them, but where we have some, sometimes maintenance is problematic. And that back there on the left side of the screen there is a four-foot fence where there's neighborhood. In 2010, there was an eleven-year-old girl abducted from Jefferson Middle School, which is the largest middle school in the city just across the street. And a lot of people wondered how that could have happened in broad daylight with crossguards and police guards and a lot of parents and school buses. And it is not known for sure, but it is believed that the perpetrator drapes off through this area. What I love about this is an example of how all of us work together. You as a council deeded this property over to the school board, and so, we took out the fence. The school board expanded once one of the smallest playgrounds in Oklahoma City into a larger playground. The school board mows that now. The neighbors don't have to deal with it. And you still have, just like you were talking about, the abandoned railroad tracks a while ago, the access to your utility lines through there because nothing will be built on that. So, everyone worked together, just as like you should. And Debbie Martin talks about how for years she took calls and complaints on that. And so, we look for those kind of projects. If you and your wards have different areas that you would like for us to address, this is the perfect illustration of something that's very successful. This was a park in South Oklahoma City. That's actually just two trees. There were 12 vagrants living there on a regular basis that we identified. I'll leave you to your imagination about what a lot of that is that I'm looking at. But we had identified that there was prostitution going on there, as among other things, there was drug paraphernalia. That's one of the new splash pads behind an arboretum. Obviously, if you'd ever thought there was a safe place that your children can play, that would certainly qualify. And, you know, we took out sixteen tons or, I believe, no, three, two, 48 tons of trash, three 16-ton dump trucks of just debris that we removed. It's been a little while ago, I was trying to recall. Before, it was one twig. So, now you can drive underneath there. That's like an land alcove. That is all residential area that surrounds that little curvature area of the park there. And this is Capitol Hill High School, the largest in the city school district. Forty-nine point six acres, I believe. It is mammoth. And then, the back 10 acres in 1973, there was a dedicated tree orchard. It had gone out of control whenever the school quit maintaining it. So, it took a lot of crew time to go in there and do that. What's important about that is all three South Oklahoma City schools play their home football games there, which obviously means they host away games for all kinds of students coming from each corner of the state. I don't think that any parent ever loaded their child up on a school bus to send down to Oklahoma City in anticipation that this kind of stuff was going on right there as the buses unload. So, now, it's a beautiful park area that is a great enhancement for the neighborhood that abuts up behind that. And of course, the students were able to go out there and play. And there's an example of all the trash that was collected there. The wood chips, Councilman Shadie, were very eco-friendly. We tried to chip everything up and pack it around the tree trunks to control underbrush from coming back up. And we have obviously worked with our inmates that we don't have the ability, like the community service workers, to take out and have them sort out the trash so that we can do as much as we can with recycling. Just kind of how the park looks today. These are just some other examples. I don't want to take up very much of your time, but you can get an idea of the kind of trash and debris. That's a 20-foot trailer with a 12-passenger van, just for the breadth of the trash that we can pick up. We average crews that run between 20 and 40 a day. This is Crystal Lake, and I think each of you are familiar with some of the developments and enhancements that have gone on there. And there was a self-made landfill. We picked up 3,300 tires from that spot. You can see that. We've become certified as a DEQ pickup place. And so, now, if we can just collect counties and have them at the county barn, DEQ takes and removes them from us so that they are properly disposed of at no expense to the taxpayers. If, or to the county. This is at the north end of the Stockyards. It's kind of like the gateway to Stockyards. That's a pathway to the poorest elementary school in the city, Mark Twain Elementary. Students actually walk past there and that is a project scheduled to be tackled next month. We speak about the perfect marriage. There are a ton of alternative sentencing programs, but the beauty of this one is that it combines the labor force from the courts with the equipment that we have from the county road crews. So that we're able to take on massive projects like a car. You wouldn't expect, obviously, a community service worker to haul off a car on their back, et cetera. So, we also do these little projects. These are examples of the graffiti. This is an interior street. This is one of two examples where county crews can work on private property. The other would be, I believe, after tomorrow with the passage of a resolution from the commissioners to remove red cedars from private property. But in this case, so far, we're working on graffiti removal. We have to have the property owner sign a release statement. And we have obviously a partnership with you as well because you're providing us the water for the power washer for that. And Community Action provides us the paint and the chemicals to remove that. This is Chesapeake. In fact, that's Teresa Rose there in the lower left-hand corner. And she brought out a crew. And what I want you to be proud of is this is systemic. And what I want you to be proud of is this has stimulated all kinds of civic and corporate involvement. We have a number of different businesses and people in the community who have wanted to go work on the foundation of the efforts that have been done by those in the offender program. We work on small projects too, a lot of which will never merit a presentation, but this is just a smattering of few. And we also are trying to help with all the quality-of-life projects that you have here going on in Oklahoma City with our vibrant community, because most of them are held on public land, such as the Arts Festival and Life Mayor. You know how much work goes into that. And we have also the boat races and different things along the river where there's cleanup, tear-down, and setup, which is extremely expensive if you're contracting it out, and we try to work and facilitate that. And I think that today or in yesterday, they were actually helping pack up the Friends of the Library book sale out at the fairgrounds. We've helped with the Governor's Food Drive Program, and of course, every fall, we have worked with the Salvation Army's Coat Drive, where we've collected several. It's a ready-made program for disasters, which helps the entire community, and we have, go ahead, other future projects online, such as maybe looking at doing community gardens, like the sheriff has already done, to reduce the produce bill at the county jail, and maybe help those, like Councilman Kelly is pointing out, that are having trouble with affordable income and housing. There are a lot of people that are a part of this deal, and I'd be remiss to say if I didn't give a lot of credit to my two fellow commissioners who are present today, because every vote we have had has been a unanimous vote. We've had a united front coming on, and this year, we're very excited about a bill that's at the legislature that would require deadbeat parents who do not pay child support to work two days a week on the Shine Crew, leaving them five days a week to find a job. That is, until they find a job, they would work there. It does not pay off their back child support. So the concept is, you either come and work for free, or you go and work for a check and support your family. So we are hopeful that that will pass. In the event that that occurs, we could look at a sizable increase to our crews, which is why we have begun discussions with you, the council, about what would happen with the Manuel Perez Center there on Reno in May on the south end of the fairgrounds as a potential place where Shine could headquarter out of. And I just want to end with saying a big thank you to each of you, because I have had some involvement with every member of the council and Mayor Cornet, and you have each been supportive and helping us along the way, and I want you to feel good about the investment in Oklahoma City, as the stewards of those dollars has made by investing in this program. We have, I think probably the best testimony I could offer is the judges were slow to accept this at first, but they have now said that they see time and time again where there are testimonials, where people come up and talked about what a difference it has made in their life, that they were able to save their job, they were able to keep their family unit together, and of course, they paid their debt back to society. So I think that in one instance, you were asking us to clean up something along the river in Ward Seven, and the bid that you'd received from a contractor was about $34,000, and I think we cleaned it up in one afternoon with this. And so we're out here working every day. You give us $100,000 a year. We did a $34,000 job in one afternoon. I hope you feel like you get a good return on your money. Thank you.
Okay.
Be happy to answer any questions.
Brian, first of all, I have two questions. One, how much of this, what you call tagging, is just kids trying to display their artwork as opposed to people who have been identified as gang-related?
I'd say very little. Most of it is gang-perpetuated. I would say that they are very aggressive, because as we erase it, they want to come back. But we have found in this program, we're very successful in driving them out, because when they know, they have identified us kind of as a gang as well. We're just a good gang, and they know that we're not going to let it rest, and so they pack up and move somewhere else. So we provide relief, one neighborhood at a time, or one property owner, or business owner at a time, and then they tend to pack up and move somewhere else. But we identify their markings, and those that the gang unit have told us are, in fact, symbols of different rival gangs. They are rivaling with each other, and it's war messages they're sending back and forth.
Your honor, just a question. Brian, you need to get more publicity about your program. I mentioned Shine Program to several constituents over the weekend. I got blank stares. They had no idea what I was talking about. I think it's a great program. It just needs to be given a little bit broader brush treatment in terms of publicity. Good luck, and thank you very much.
Thank you. Be happy to work with you to do that.
Ed?
What, so the total cost to the city is $25,000 a quarter? And then you mentioned a project in Ward Seven that did, are, is the Shine Program charging the city for any projects?
No.
For not, not water utilities or city or any?
Wait, you give us a water key so that we're able to fill up the brush pump or the power washer to go fight the graffiti. We have one unit that works five days a week just on graffiti, and then we have another unit that goes and works on the beautification cleanup project stuff. And so that would be like the only billable, if you will.
Okay. Wait, how many, how many of the, those in the program do you think suffer from substance abuse, or they're because of substance abuse?
Well, the Drug Court is one of the biggest contributors to the labor of our program, and that's, I was just speaking to a group yesterday, and I pointed out, that's the beauty of having them sentenced to this program, because also, as a stipulation of that, they may be required to do some drug rehab or drug counseling, as opposed to in jail, their access to that could be more restricted and limited, although there are some programs that are offered. And then, of course, as a stipulation, they're usually required from Drug Court to go and do drug testing and, you know, have some level of accountability.
Okay.
So we work with, like, for instance, the Drug Court, the public defender, and the district attorney. All of us are in conjunction together to make sure that we're trying to have a successful outcome. And we've just celebrated 10,000 people through this program so far, and I say "celebrated" because to date, we have only had three re-sentenced to the program. So our recidivism rate is, I think, pretty spectacular.
So what, what percent are coming from the Drug Court?
An exact percentage, I'm not sure. I would know it's a substantial amount.
The majority?
Probably close to a majority.
Well, it's, it's hard to see any of the projects that they've done and not be impressed with what you've got going on. It's remarkable when they move in and do what they do and what it looks like afterwards, and I compliment you on that. If somebody would like to get a hold of you requesting Shine's assistance on something, they call your office?
Sure. 713-1502. It's administered by District Two, but it works throughout the whole county, and as I mentioned, the other two commissioners and I work well together on those projects. So if you identify a project in their district and call them, it's just as well, you can call any of the three of us, and we will make sure it gets addressed.
Okay.
Right. Can, are the judges sentencing individuals to your program?
Directly to it, oftentimes. Not just court services. If it just says "community service" on their court order, then sometimes they try to push them towards this program, but oftentimes, the judges are ordering them directly to this program specifically.
And if an individual in an I-court system has sentenced, or is sentenced to, to X-number days in the jail, the alternative could be that they could be sentenced to the Shine Program and satisfied whatever fine?
Right. And the bill that we passed last year actually allows for you to collect part of the fee for revenue here for the city too. So in addition to saving you cost of incarceration, you could also be collecting fees from those offenders as revenue to the city, just like the ticketing process. And we do have Bethany and Midwest City actively sentencing them to us frequently, and I anticipate that a lot of the municipal courts will be looking more and more to this as an alternative, because of, again, the cost of incarceration is so high.
Can I just get a sense, Brian? I don't, how many hours would somebody typically be sentenced to for, say, possession of marijuana?
Oh, usually between 40 and 100. DUIs or first offense are usually a 40-hour community service. They may come in conjunction with other fees that they've assessed, so that may not be the grand total of their punishment. And though we're trying to work with a lot of the judges on this, it's still, obviously, their prerogative with sentencing. A lot of them still do a brief sentence in jail and then tack on community service afterwards, but they claim that they're doing part of the community service in lieu of maybe a 60-day sentence, maybe reduced to a 30-day, and then 40 hours of community service.
So they could have community service and a fine? I mean, it doesn't necessarily eliminate the fine.
Not necessarily, but the public defender is such a proponent of this, because if you claim you don't have money, we have an arrangement with McDonald's there downtown, where they have a big parking lot that allows us to park there, because it's right on a bus line that connects every bus route in Oklahoma City. So we pick up there every morning at 7:00 a.m. If somebody doesn't have money, they don't, you know, they can get bus fare, share fare tickets and things like that, and they can arrive if transportation is an issue.
Thank you.
Brian, one other question. A prisoner in the county jail volunteer for this? Or does he have to be assigned to it by a judge?
The judges have to order them to community service and/or directly to this program for liability purposes, because thanks to work of, thanks to state statute, we have no workers' comp or tort claim liability, nor does the city if we should be working in conjunction with you on any project, and they'd unfortunately be injured. I do want to end also on, you mentioned the graffiti. I never thought we could get to this point, but we are now down to half a business day notice on graffiti. So if you call us with graffiti between 7:00 and 11:00 a.m., it will be addressed between noon and 4:00 o'clock. If you call between 11:00 and 4:00, it will be addressed the next morning between 7:00 and noon. So those are the call-ins. We actually proactively go out there. There's lots of graffiti still out there, and if people call and say, "Well, I've seen graffiti that never gets addressed." We're not omnipresent, so we can't see it all. It does tend to crop up very fast, but we have two problems. One is sometimes people are scared to tackle it. They won't release us, and if they don't release us, then we have to turn it over to you, and the city has to address it through the measures you have passed through ordinances. And sometimes, we just have difficulty locating a property owner. They're just never home, maybe an abandoned property.
Okay.
Anything else? Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Commissioner. We have another presentation?
We do. Back when we went through our strategic planning exercises with the council, the council asked that we come back and address progress on each of the council priorities. So we're doing that this morning. We're doing that on a periodic basis, and we're doing that this morning. And this morning, we're going to talk a little bit about public safety, and we have Chief City and Chief Clay here this morning. Welcome.
Thank you. Glad to be here. I think I want to start by, you know, on the heels of Commissioner Mon's comments, I want to thank the commissioner and the Shine Program for working with us and documenting a lot of the graffiti. Obviously, part of that's prosecution, not just cleanup, to try to prevent it from occurring in the future, and they've done a great job in working with us and cooperating with us and documenting that so that we can collect evidence. So I do, I do appreciate that very, very much. This morning, we're going to talk about some of your council priorities. One of them, obviously, of your priorities is to provide a safe and secure community. And we're going to talk about some of the things that we're doing, and we're going to prioritize and kind of give you a little bit of a quick overview of what's going on and what really, what we're trying to prioritize to help you reach this, reach this goal of a, of a safe and secure community that we all have. The, one of our priorities this year, and you're also going to see this in leading for results, and one of our strategic, one of our strategic issues and measurements is going to be aggravated assaults, and I'm going to show you why we're somewhat targeting that. The aggravated assaults right now, as you can see in this slide up through October, you have to remember, our, our data that we collect is about two months behind. We've actually collected up through November, but I've given you the stats up through October here. We've had 3,175 aggravated assaults. This year, we're going to try to do something a little bit aggressive and somewhat a little bit risky, at least, at least trying to predict that we can, we're going to try to reduce the aggravated assaults by 5%. A lot of the, a lot of the things involving aggravated assaults, we don't have complete control of, but we do think we can effect a reduction by targeting certain areas, hotspot areas. The 5% reduction is going to amount to about 185 to 190 reduction in aggravated assaults for, for next year. If you look at November, at, at the November numbers, we're already looking at 30, over 3,500 aggravated assaults. Once you go to the next slide. Yeah, thanks. We already have in November, we have 35, over 3,500 aggravated assaults. In all of 2011, we had 3,500. You see, in 2010, we had 3,800. So we're, we're on, we're on par to probably reach the 2010 numbers or come close to that for 2012. I know we hear a lot about the homicides last year, the numbers that we had, the increased numbers, but you can see here, what I really like, what I really look at is a trend. One year does not make a trend. Having 99 homicides is not a trend. It's obviously a very big concern, and if that continues, it's a huge concern, but there's a lot of things that affect that, the homicide or the murder rate. A lot of it has to do with just luck, medical care, some of those types of things. What I, what I really look at as far as a trend goes is, over a long period of time, back to, say, over 10 or 12 years here, is, is from 2000, you can see that the trend for assaults is up, aggravated assaults. This isn't all assaults. We have a lot of minor assaults that we work, but aggravated assaults, the ones that ha, that will result possibly in death, are, are listed here with, you can see where we had 2,500 back in 2000, and we're, we're over 3,500 and up to 3,800 in some cases today. So this is, this is a concern that we want to address, and this is what we're, this is why we prioritize this. It's in conjunction with the homicide rates, obviously, because, because these are the individuals that could end up in that, in that critical statistic. One of the things that we're going to try to do to help with this is, obviously, is increase our visibility in some of those high, high areas. How do we, how are we going to do this? I know that you added officers last year, and I'll explain this to some council persons already, but you, you added officers last year. We have a salary savings. We have a, we have, we have had, as a result of the economic downturn, we had, we did not have classes for two years. So we have a vacancy rate of about 80. The, the city manager has allowed, has authorized us to use the salary savings from those vacancies, to be able to use that for overtime, to be able to put more resources in those areas where we think we need them. We're identifying the hotspots. Most of what we do now is data-driven. We try to put those officers in the area where we're having a significant number of problems, and we can identify those and have identified those. So part of that's going to be visibility in those areas. A lot of it's going to be strict enforcement, taking the bad guys off the street, taking guns away from individuals, that in most cases, 80% of those firearms result in what you see up there, these numbers in aggravated assaults. So the additional overtime also with the salary savings, we've also had grant programs that have, have, over the years, dried up to a certain extent. We also, but the city has authorized overtime for us to be able to continue our, our gang enforcement, and we do that during the summer months when it seems to increase through May and September, through September, to be able to try to, to try to hold the drive-bys down and to address some of these violent crimes. So we're going to do that with, with overtime money, and then we're aggressively trying to fill our vacancies. Obviously, we fill our vacancies, and we can get those, those numbers, those officers out in the field. 80-plus officers is, it helps us significantly in being able to, to have enough people to address those problems in those areas. So those are some of the things we're going to try to do to address that. And to, and, and then hopefully, our 5% is basically not over a long period of time. We want to do that next year. We want to reduce those by about at least 190, 200 assaults, even greater, obviously, if, if we can. The next slide shows you-
Chief, can I ask you a question real quick?
Yes, sir.
I'm sorry to interrupt.
That's fine.
I'm just so struck by the rate of acceleration between 2007 and 2008. To me, that's the most dramatic part of this slide, is you give a 25% increase in one year during the recession, which tells me that, I mean, obviously, this is, has multiple causes, and, and I have no doubt that adding more police officers will suppress crime, but it wouldn't matter how many, I mean, you couldn't add enough police officers to the street to stop that kind of movement. I mean, that's a huge increase. And so clearly, economic conditions, economic, are, are playing a role. I mean, I just, and, and I'm wondering, have we looked at poverty? Have we, have we grafted poverty over these years on this and, and other economic factors and tried to, to find correlations as to what might be driving crime besides the number of officers on the street, which I don't dispute in any way is, is a, is a major factor? But what other factors are driving crime and aggravated assaults and this kind of rate of acceleration?
Well, I mean, there's a lot of social factors, but you're right. I mean, and there's been all kinds of studies. There's been recent studies that have come out that have, have shown you- out that have shown you, but it's, you read only a study, if you've been in law enforcement for 35 years like I have, when I worked the streets, the higher violent areas were the poorest, economically poorest areas. I mean, those are the ones that have the highest amount of violent crime, has the highest amount of crime, period, whether it's property crime or violent crime. So poverty, obviously, I mean, plays a role in that. You know, I've never really seen a significant impact on an economic downturn as far as aggravated assaults go. There may be some in robberies, there may be some in property crimes, a lot more thefts, and some of those things go up, but it's, but it's hard to tell. And if you look at, if you look at the chart here, even though there's an economic downturn, you know, that's also during the same time period that we stopped hiring. We quit hiring for about two years. So there is a correlation with the economic downturn with also the fact that we didn't have a, have an academy and ended up with over 100 officers short during that period of time. And then it takes you about a year, you know, at least a year and a half to get an officer fully trained. So it takes time to build that back up. So you're looking at a long period of time where you don't have, you know, officers in the field, on the street, will help reduce crime, will help keep it down. It won't eliminate crime to what you're talking to, you know, education, the poverty level, which there's a correlation between not graduating and poverty level, medical treatment, those types of things. You know, there's more, most of your gang activity, most of your gang activity is in the lower economic areas. And what's popular with the gang activity and becoming more popular is that, is everybody wants a gun, and they're easy to get. So, you know, guns play a huge role in that number right there, because those are serious assaults, and most of your serious assaults are committed by firearms. You know, it's hard to beat somebody up seriously enough to be in this category. It happens, but it doesn't happen very often. So you're right, there are a number of factors that go into that. And us in law enforcement, what we can do, and we have some preventive programs, we have, you know, we have Police Athletically, we have some things, we work with different social agencies. We help start Drug Court, as the Commissioner was talking about. We were one of the prime role players in developing it, along with the DA's office and the Public Defender's Office. Those types of things we're involved in. But our primary role is taking calls and making sure the bad guys are off the street and the guns are off the street for people that shouldn't have them. And we can, we can suppress that by having them on the street. And part of it is, we'll go along here in the community feeling safe, is our ability for that person to see an officer on the street. Not necessarily enforcing, but feeling that they have somebody there. Police Department empowers the community. We've seen that with programs like the Weed and Seed where we've gone in, and they feel more empowered to do things if they feel like we're there to back them up and to support them. So, I mean, it's, you're right, it's very complicated, and again, and we have a limited certain role in part of that. And the bottom line is that, those, a lot of those things you're talking about are, I'm kind of getting on soapbox here, but all the things you're talking about are long-term. You know, we need to stop, we need to stop the shootings tonight. I mean, our job is to get out there and to try to keep people from being killed tonight. And so, and drugs play a huge nexus in that. Alcoholism, drugs, I mean, you've talked about that before. Obviously, you know, most of our crimes, a lot of our homicides, have a drug nexus to, whether it's alcohol or illegal drugs or prescription drugs. So that is usual.
Thank you, Mr. President.
The homicide rate, as I spoke before, I mean, it is what it is. Last year, it went up, it's fluctuated. We've had high, extremely high years. Over the last 30 years, you've had some in the 90s, the high is 102. You know, I don't anticipate this year being 99. For example, this first, these first two months, we're at about eight, which is really about average or a little bit below average, four or five, maybe a month, is what we usually average. And we're about at that average now. That can change if you have a really bad month. Last year, we started off with a lot of homicides in January. So it's hard to tell, but as you can see, it still goes up, and there will be a correlation with homicides going up, as long as your aggravated assault rate is going up. And over a 10-year period, you can see where it has. Other crimes against persons, just so you know, rape has actually gone down over the years. We had 388 in 2000, 2011. But again, in, as of November of this year, we've got 364. So we're going to, we make, you know, we're probably going to get up with one more month to go in these calculations up to what our 2000 level was. I hope that's an aberration, but you just have to wait and see. But over the long, over the long term, over that 11-year, 12-year period, it has, it has gone down. Robbery rates, over the years have gone up. You're looking, in 2000, you had 990. We're up over 1,200 in 2011. We'll probably be over that 2011 mark. In November, we had 11, we had 1,01116. So, you know, most likely, we'll be close to that 2011 mark or maybe a little bit higher. But it slowly, as you can see, also goes up with a peak we had in 2007, 2008. And again, the economic issue may have some role in that. You know, one of my concerns is that drugs play, she's such a huge role anymore with prescription narcotics. We're having a lot more influx of illegal drugs coming in to the United States, and the market's pretty good. And, you know, if they can't, if they can't sell cocaine or something like that, now the cartels are bringing in illegal prescription drugs or manufacturing methamphetamine. We shut down the Mon Pops where we hardly have any anymore, but the Mexican market takes care of that by manufacturing meth down there, since it's so popular here and selling it, it's cheaper than cocaine. So it's market-driven, and if there's a demand for it, and probably one of the things we can do is be a lot more aggressive in trying, in the area of education as far as narcotics goes. And then obviously, we need, we need to increase our enforcement also, that we haven't increased over the last 20 years or 15 years. Violent crime clearance rates, I know this was talked about or mentioned at your workshops, so I thought I'd put that up here. You can see where we're above national average in two categories, and we're below. Now, this just has to do with person crimes. We're not talking about property crimes here, since our priority primarily is looking at person crimes and aggravated assaults. As you can see, our homicide unit does a very good job. They have a 71% clearance rate. National average is 65. We're a little bit below in assaults. And rapes were above average, and robbery were below average. In the next slide, part of what we do, obviously, is based how well we're doing is on the surveys. In 2013, we had a, we're at 53%. It's actually, it's actually a 2012 survey, but if you look at the fiscal year, it's 2012, 13. So there will be another, as I understand, another survey in 2013. We're basing this off the 2012, 13 survey. You have 53%, our target was set back in 2005, when initially, we started our Leading For Results, and the approval rate for, or the approval rate from the citizens, persons who felt safe, was 55%. And we've kept it that as a benchmark to be able to measure ourselves. Again, visibility and our ability to reduce crime in those, in some of those neighborhoods will affect this. And here's a historical perspective over that same number. You're looking at, in 2008, it was 51%, dropped, dropped lower. 2009 went up to 60. And it's been about the same, 54, 53%. And then with the survey we do in 13, then we'll see how we're faring then. This is a percentage we have in LFR. We've had it, we've always measured it, but in LFR, we measure it at nine minutes and 30 seconds and being able to respond to a 911 call. This includes also dispatching. If you look at that nine minutes and 30 seconds, it includes about two minutes of dispatch, or two and a half minutes of dispatching the call and a seven-minute response once the officer gets the call in the field. And I think there are several things that we're, we may be able to do that may reduce this in the future. And one of them is the fact that we just went to 10-hour shifts in dispatch. They worked really hard at trying to come up with a formula that would be able to allow them to do that. And along with that 10-hour dispatch, gives them a few more days off. And at this point, and it's early, because it's just three or four months into it, but at this point, it is actually, it's actually helped reduce the turnover in dispatch. It's also reduced the sick leave, and it's reduced the overtime. Again, that's not a trend yet. We want to look at a full year and see how that does. It's a pilot program for a year to see if, if it continues as it's doing now, it'll become, definitely become a permanent program, and hopefully, it will help, help us get those calls out a lot quicker.
Chief, is the, you said 10-hour?
10-hour shift.
As opposed to?
Eight hours.
Okay.
So they're working, they work 10 hours, they'll work 10, they'll work an eight-hour, they'll work eight and six, they'll work eight days straight at 10 hours, they'll get six days off. It's kind of like what the police officers are doing in the field now. They've worked eight and 10 for quite some time. But what it does, it really gives them more, it gives them more time. I mean, it's a very, very stressful job, and I don't think people realize how stressful that job is and what a great job they did in, you know, handling such emotional calls over and over again. But it allows us, it allows them to have more time off. It really allows us to have more people on the floor, more overlap and more people on the floor by having these types of shifts, which allows them to have more time to train, which they need, have them more time for a lunch break, to actually leave, walk away from the, you know, their terminals and be able to take a break. It's had, it's had a lot of different consequences that are, so far, have all been pretty positive.
How many of the 911 center, as far as those receiving calls, are all those individuals civilian?
All of the police are civilian, not fire, but they're, they're in the same building, but they're separate.
Okay.
So all of our, all of our police dispatchers are civilian.
Okay. Thank you.
Another thing we're doing that hopefully may help these, the response times on calls for service, as you authorized last year, for us to do a pilot program on civilian investigating positions, where we had four of those positions, and we're just now getting them. We're getting ready to start training those individuals, getting them hired and training it to go out and take non-priority calls. So if you call in for burglary, it's already happened, all you need's a report and maybe an investigation, some fingerprint or DNA taken. These individuals will go out to those calls rather than tying up a uniformed police officer. If this is successful, if these four people are hired and it's a successful program, we're probably looking to come back and trying to hire more of those types of positions so that officers aren't tied up on something that's not such a priority call and be able to improve our response times this way. We also are adding additional personnel with overtime, obviously, like I spoke about before, in the hotspots and things like that, is we put, if we're able to put those in those positions, then those officers aren't tied up responding to those areas, to those calls quite as much. They'll still have to, they'll still have to respond to a certain extent, because most of these calls, the aggravated assaults and those types of calls are manpower-intensive. It takes more than one or two officers to be able to respond to those calls safely. And you can see our, over, since 2009, our response times have basically been 70 percentile. It got up to 73, 74% in 10 and 11. Some of that, I think, has to do with some of our redistricting. We redistricted Spring Lake, according to our staffing study, did some of the things, increased the number of calls for Spring Lake. They had fewer calls, and that redistricting helped us to a certain extent. At least, that's what I gave credit to back when we did it. It actually has gone back down to about 70% now. So probably my reasoning for doing that may not have been, or the reason for the increase or the faster response time may not have been totally due to that. I think some of it now is just getting our manpower and getting our vacancies filled. Any questions, any further questions?
What, just since we have a county commissioner, and we've talked about cooperation with the county, what, what ways, even theoretical, do you see as possibilities that we might coordinate efforts with the county in the years to come that might improve efficiencies, economies of scale, response times?
Well, I think, you know, I think there's some possibilities. I think years ago, I know that Councilman Morris had worked with, sat on a committee to look at consolidation with other agencies. And it really turned out with, this wasn't just with the county, it was other agencies, turned out to be kind of cost prohibitive and politically, it would be hard to, hard to do. I think probably one of the, the best opportunities for partnership is the county. The county has, as far as unincorporated areas, is very small in what their actual responsibilities are in jurisdictions if they take calls. Everything else usually comes to Oklahoma City, because we cover most of the area, other than there's about 14 or 15 other small agencies within Oklahoma City or within Oklahoma County that have their own police departments. But there are some things, I think, that there are some, there are some opportunities. We cooperate now, not, you know, not with just things like with Shine, obviously, but also Sheriff Wetzel and the county respond to a lot of calls throughout Oklahoma City. You know, as either backup, we have special events, they're involved, a lot of times, special events, a lot of the reserve officers come out and assist. There's a lot of areas where there is, there is cooperation. That's the one thing unique about law enforcement out there is, it doesn't matter what I say or Sheriff Wetzel says, those officers out there are going to work together because they need each other. And so, but there is, there is quite a bit of that going on. And there are other areas, probably, we could, we could look at and work more closely on in conjunction with, you know, other things, maybe special events or special operations, tactical bomb and some of those type of things, we work together. But there may be some things that we could do to help make that more cost-effective.
Yeah, I mean, in terms of, say, manpower deployment, is that being coordinated? I mean, I see a lot of county law enforcement vehicles in Oklahoma City streets, for example. I mean, do we know where they are, and they know where we are, and this is all being coordinated? Or is it just two entities operating in a vacu, I mean?
Well, there's, there are two entities working separately. I do not, we do not assign where county officers work. County does that. I mean, we are responsible for ours and coordination of ours. We do not coordinate the county. If we need help in certain areas, obviously, we will coordinate those types of things. It happens a lot during special events. There's much more coordination, you know, if you have the Memorial Run or you have something in Bricktown, a lot of them will work some of the Bricktown stuff, the events like that. But as far as day-to-day, we don't assign county officers. Again, that's not to say they don't back the officers, that we, they have communication with each other. The county knows where our calls, if our calls are coming out, they can monitor that and vice versa. So they have the ability to help, to respond to that or to back other officers, just as we do them. But we do not, we do not, and the thing is, is there's, there is, they have overlapping jurisdiction with us, we don't have overlapping jurisdiction with them.
Right.
In their unincorporated areas. There's not that much of that, and the population density is pretty low in those areas, so that's not a huge concern. But they do have cross-jurisdiction with, with, obviously, any municipality in Oklahoma County.
It's about 5% is unincorporated, 5% of the-
I'm not sure what percentage is.
Chief, do they have the same radio frequencies?
Yeah, they work, they work off a different radio frequency, but we do have the ability to, they have the ability to listen to our radio and ours to theirs. But theirs is a different radio system.
So a 911 dispatcher, can he talk to a county community?
Yeah, they can't, yes, they can communicate with the county. So, but if you have, if you're an unincorporated area, let's say you're in the stockyards, which is an unincorporated area, the stockyards itself, not necessarily, not the, not the streets, not, if you're in the stockyard area itself, if you were to make a call from there, your call would go to county, not to Oklahoma City. And there's, and there may be some areas of improvement in that regard, too.
You know, Chief, excuse me, I'd like to change, shift this question just a little bit, and also, I'd like to thank you again for your participation, as well as the other police officers last week at Councilman Kelly's Town Hall meeting. One thing that you mentioned during that presentation is that you and the police officers in particular, every day, don't think in terms of how can we reduce crime and make this a safer place, you know, long-term, five, 10 years now from now. You have a concern as to how can you make Oklahoma City a safer place today? And, but- looking at a more longer-term solution, one thing that struck me was when Ms. Perry made a comment that approximately eight million dollars of the police department's budget goes towards domestic abuse calls and similar type of, of issues. Uh, if there was some way we could help reduce that, kind of fall into your goal of a five percent reduction, uh, and I'm not suggesting the city consider making a contribution to the YWCA, I don't think that's our, uh, we're supposed to even consider those types of things, but if we could expend some money, maybe fund another position with the YWCA that would help, whether it's in education or handling a hotline or something that would help eliminate those domestic abuse situations. And as a result of that, sixty to seventy thousand dollar, uh, funding of additional person to work with them, we had a five percent reduction. Well, that's a four hundred thousand dollar reduction in costs, so we've got a net savings of over three hundred thousand. Could your department, along with our budget department and perhaps somebody from the YWCA, look to see if there's any possibility that we could help fund a portion of that program in an effort to help reduce, uh, domestic abuse, uh, those types of situations? Because in additions to eliminating those instances, I would hope it further helps support the police department, because it's my understanding, officers don't enjoy going to those types of calls and, and often they're placed in a situation where they may be encountering danger as a result of responding to that type of situation.
No, I'll, I'll be glad to talk with Jen. Obviously, we have a great relationship with the YWCA and, and they're doing a lot of things. One of the things is they're trying to expand their facility and I think she talked about that. Obviously, they needed more spaces to get some of the, some of these victims and their families and their children, a lot of children involved, out of that situation, at least temporarily, so they could get them the services they need to get out of that, that environment, you know, that just is a vicious circle. But, um, I, I'll certainly talk to her about that and whether or not, uh, another position. We're doing some things, we did a study for several years that we participated in, it's a national program, and we're, and it's over with, the study's over with, but we're continuing that program where we're really trying to, to give the victim more of an opportunity to analyze and call a victim's assistance, assistant and analyze what their problem is to see if we can get them the services that they need. And Oklahoma City, there were about five different major cities that participated in that throughout Oklahoma, and we, throughout the whole, throughout the whole process, uh, we probably had more involvement with our officers and we, we had more victims calling based on what we were trying to proactively do. Now, it took a little more time, we took those calls, because you really had to take time to talk to those victims and tell them what this opportunity is all about. But, uh, we're continuing that even though that study is no longer in effect, we just feel like it's, it's, it has, has helped in a lot of cases in helping the victims, uh, break that cycle. But I'll, but I'll talk to her about that. Obviously, more resources and some of our human resources are, are most valuable in, in making those types of reductions, but they can do a lot in assisting the victims in more of a proactive way, because we don't have any trouble identifying the victims and we don't have any trouble finding the suspects and putting them in jail. It's, it's what, what happens to them after that, you know, and in many cases, they're right back out with very few social services or very few, very, very, or very few, uh, not much accountability, in other words. That's where the, the big downfall is, all the way from juvenile to adults. So, but the police department doesn't have any problem identifying who the bad people are.
From my analysis of what, or my, what, my take on what I'm hearing is that, that a couple of things. One is that we're just short of police officers, period. And two, the idea that we use overtime, we use salary savings to pay overtime is not anything but a short-term solution, that's not a long-term solution. We'd be better off using those salary savings to start hiring more, more officers and, and solve the problem for a long-term rather than just a short-term.
Right.
But the next thing, I think, one of the things with regard to these responses is many of the responses that come from my part of Oklahoma City are a home robbery or home burglary that has occurred and it's already passed, it's gone. That would seem to me a fertile place where we could, if, if county sheriff's deputies were trained to take the kind of information necessary, that would be fertile ground to have them do that, because those response times are atrocious and whether it matters or not, I know it doesn't matter. I mean, if the crime already happened, it doesn't matter whether the officer gets there in ten minutes or ten hours, I mean, but it matters to the person's perception of safety. So you've got that very low bar, I think, of fifty-five percent of the people feeling that they're safe, and one of the reasons they don't is because of those response times. And, and the main response time is that one that we push off because practically we know we can't do anything about a robbery that's already happened or a, or a burglary that's already happened. But from a perception standpoint and from a manpower standpoint, it would seem to me that we need to do two things. We need to run, hire more officers, and two, we need to find a way to cooperate with the county if we can, if they will, they have trained investigators that could take those, they could show up and be at that place. I think that would raise the public's perception of safety, um, because it's the number one complaint I get. And you know, you, if you're trying to explain that to somebody whether, what, what would have happened if they'd have got there in ten minutes as opposed to three hours or not at all, that, the person that you're making that explanation to doesn't, they don't see it that way. I mean, they see their house was burglarized, their stuff is gone, and they want to tell somebody. And, and I, that's, that's not an unreasonable feeling on their part. And I think it would do a lot to raise that perception of, of, of safety. And it would save us a huge amount of manpower so we could be doing the kinds of criminal investigations and the kind of policing that we ought to be doing. I, to me, that's an area where we could look into that almost very soon. I, I, my, my concern would be whether deputies are, are trained at a level to, to get the kind of information, but, but that's just a function of, of doing it.
Right, and then some, and some of the other, uh, uh, some of the other issues you would have is if county would have to be willing to take them on, basically, a, a reporting system, because we, right now, if county takes, if county does something, it goes into their reporting system and we, we need to account for that. We need to know where those burglaries occur, we need that information.
Right.
Because it happened in Oklahoma City and we need to legitimately provide that data.
And so many times, they happen like there'll be three in a week in one neighborhood.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, that's gotta be, that's not a coincidence that that happens.
It's usually the same person, too.
Yeah, exactly. And, 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 and because we're not getting to those, I think sometimes we're missing that opportunity to, to do something there. I just think that's fertile ground to make, to cooperate with the county, because they've got the manpower, obviously they have the manpower. I think it's a much better use of their time than writing tickets. Uh, I think that's our job and I think, but I think that is a, a synergy that could be, be achieved by some cooperation between the two bodies and, and that could be achieved quickly, I would think, about, the training problem is, is, but that ought to be something that could be overcome very shortly.
Just a couple of comments, Chief. Reflecting back on, on my upbringing, one of the things that has stuck with me and I can still remember the house on the next block where the police officer, who was the beat officer, lived, and the beat officer walked his beat every single day. And I understand I came from an inner-city situation, which we can't do that here in Oklahoma City, but that presence of the officer being seen every day, I think, made a significant contribution to the overall safety that all of us as, as neighbors felt growing up in that neighborhood. So therefore, uh, getting on my platform, I think we do need additional police officers out there in the field where their presence can be seen by the public and also by the bad guys. In that same regard, uh, one of the greatest tools I think we have in neighborhoods to increase the police presence without the police actually being there is the neighborhood watch system. And I think you would agree, would you not, that that is a great deterrent?
Absolutely.
To these home break-ins where a vehicle driving around with two citizens in there armed with a cellphone and all they're intended to do is call nine-one-one with that flashing light out there does have a, have a way to suppress some of this criminal activity that we have. And so, uh, the response times, I think, would also go down, would they not, if we had additional officers available in the field to answer these priority one calls?
Yes.
And so, uh, I, I think those three things we need to kind of keep in mind as we go forward. Thank you, sir.
Chief, uh, do your department get engaged with other municipal, uh, uh, departments as it relates to high-profile crimes that's in Oklahoma County but in a different municipality? Is it the sheriff's office that gets the first call or is it the Oklahoma City Police Department to cooperate with those, that other, uh, department?
Smaller agencies, smaller agencies, you know, they're responsible, obviously, in their jurisdiction for any crime, even major crime. And in most cases, if they're unable to handle that, they'll, they will ask for assistance from the Oklahoma State Bureau of Investigation. They can and do ask for assistance in many cases. If you talk like, areas like Spencer, which is a very small police department, uh, the county helps them quite a bit. Uh, but, and then we would, we, we have helped other smaller agencies with, because they don't, they don't have a, a professional crime scene investigative unit. With all the tools necessary and expertise, we will, we will help any of them based on their request. Uh, we've helped, we've, we've helped county based on requests. Uh, so it's, yeah, it's a cooperative effort, but, uh, in most cases, for any other, a really small agency within the state, OSBI is, is usually the avenue for, uh, for a smaller agency to get investigative assistance on a, a really, you know, high-profile or a very serious case.
Well, it, it's obvious that, that our police department, even when you look at, you know, what you do within the city boundaries of Oklahoma City that you are called upon from time to time to assist some of the other municipalities in reference to that. And, you know, as much as we can talk about these issues, I think the paramount issue just comes down to one major concern, and that's what Councilman White has said, you know, repeatedly, and that is, we as a council need to do what needs to be done, and that is bring in more funds to appropriate for hiring more police officers to do a quality job of what you need to do.
Okay. Thank you.
Appreciate it. I think we have a presentation now from the Fire Department. Deputy Chief Cecil Clay, welcome Cecil.
Good morning, Mayor, Council and, uh, City Manager. Appreciate the fact to be here to get to talk about our measures. One of our things is to respond quickly, safely and meet the need. We think we can do our job, uh, by getting there quicker. So on our first slide there, it says that, uh, we're going to make all, our goal is to make all of our responses in six minutes. And that's broke out into a one-minute dispatch time and then, uh, that dispatch time would be to take the call, get the information and enter it into the computer-aided dispatch system and alert the proper station or apparatus of, of the incident. Then the five minutes that would take up the rest of that six-minute time would be to, uh, alerting the proper crew and don their protective clothing that they needed for that particular call and to get over the roadways to the incident address. The next slide, this kind of breaks this down, it's split out into two categories, we, or three categories, actually, the, the dispatch time and the, we've broken out the calls into fire responses and EMS responses. The reason we do that is the fire responses have more apparatus going to them, so it takes, there's, coming from a further distance than their first-in district, so the times are a little bit different. As you can see, in two thousand and eleven, two thousand and twelve, we met our dispatch times, which our target was ninety percent to get that call handled into the correct fire apparatus within one minute. And then in two thousand and thirteen, we've dropped to around seventy-three percent, so we missed our target. I'll explain a little bit on that. One of the reasons that we've done that is that we've started into, uh, prioritizing the calls. We're not responding on all EMS calls, now we're just responding on the most serious ones that are life-threatening. And so we started that back in July of two thousand and twelve, and so IMSA will be doing a process where they go through and get information from the caller to find out if, if it's a life-threatening call, so we're not immediately responding on that. And that's, uh, that's the reason that we're, we've got that added time on there and it's a little, uh, the times that we've added are about average at a minute and fifty-eight seconds. So that minute and fifty-eight seconds, uh, going into that six-minute response time is kind of significant for us on those targets. As you see, we've kind of came up on our fire responses, uh, closer to our target of seventy percent of the calls, getting there within five minutes. We've made strides on that and some of that is due to the computer-aided dispatch system. It, it, uh, allows them to, uh, alert the stations quicker through a, a station alerting system that we've also installed into our stations, that's taken off a few seconds on that dispatch time. And we have automatic vehicle locators on our apparatus now that allow us to dispatch the closest apparatus instead of generally what we did was a division, a, a geographical area for dispatching the apparatus that was in that area. So those have helped us to, to shorten those times a little bit. If you'll go to the next slide, this is a graph of, or a, the slide shows on the left-hand side there, those are incidents per month, how many incidents we've responded on, and then it goes, that starts, starts in that one corner in July of two thousand and eight and you can see a significant kind of gradual rise there in the incidents that we've made. That also affects our response time because the more incidents we make, takes our apparatus out of their first-in area where their, our stations are located. And then you see the drop-off there in July of two thousand and twelve where we started running on fewer incidents because of the, uh, process of eliminating the EMS calls that were not high-priority calls. They were lower priority that didn't, might not need a fire response, so that dropped, we thought that that would drop by about twenty percent. It actually dropped by eighteen point seven percent, so it's pretty close to the target that we thought, uh, we would hit. And, uh, on the, uh, we may need to change the way we report those, our response times due to the fact that we're, we're not receiving that call from IMSA immediately. They're going through their pro-Q and A, uh, response with the calling party to see if it is a life-threatening call, because we're still pretty well meeting our target of that one-minute dispatch time. Almost all the time, we're getting our calls when it comes to fire dispatch dispatched in around nineteen seconds. So that's given us a little bit of the time to, for our over-the-road response time for apparatus to actually get across there. As you well know, we've got a challenge in this city that most cities don't have because we have six hundred twenty-one square miles and those rural areas are harder to get through in a, in that, that response time. So the, the last slide here, this is some of our strategies to try to cut those response times, and it's by three additional fire stations in Oklahoma City, which was approved from bond in two thousand and seven. We've, we've actually started on Station Twenty-Six, which is at one hundred and nineteenth and Rockwell, southwest part of the city, which we, that area's grown, there's a lot of, a lot more residential and, uh, population out in that area, so that should help us to, uh, cut some of those response times in that area also. Also, every time we get another geographical location where we're responding from there, it leaves the apparatus that would have to come there in their geographical location, which decreases the response times there, too. So, and then we'll have two other stations that will be going in, in the south part of the city. And we're going to also be able to, with that same bond, we're going to be able to rebuild a couple other stations and maybe relocate some else, some resources. The, the one, one, I talked about some of the things that's helped us keep up on those response times, and a lot of them are technology, but we're kind of reaching the end of those things that are allowing us to keep up with some of this. I believe everybody realizes that we've had a great deal of increase in our, in our responses, even IMSA's noticed this year, and it may be due to just the flu outbreaks and things, but those calls take us out of our geographical locations and, and affect these response times quite a bit. So is there any questions on that?
I just want to make sure that your response, your, the one-minute dispatch time is measured from when the call is received in the 911 center until a dispatch is made?
That full six minutes is from the time that it's, it's received in the 911 center, and it actually, it used, we used to report it whenever it got to fire dispatch.
So the, the, the drop in the one-minute is primarily on the EMS calls, because if somebody calls in and says you have a fire, that's going directly to fire, and you're, you're certainly meeting the one-minute in those calls.
Yes.
The calls going in saying they have a medical problem, under the new system or new procedures, goes to IMSA to determine the priority level and then comes to you, but you're, that's still, that clock is still running on the one-minute, and that's what's caused the decrease?
Yes, I can, maybe I can clear that up a little bit. The call always comes into the 911 dispatcher, and that was either if it's an EMS call, it's always went to IMSA's dispatchers. But through the computer system, we could see that call, and we would immediately, our dispatcher would immediately dispatch a fire apparatus before July of 2012. And that's when our one-minute would start for our dispatch time, which it was always running around 19, 20 seconds average, not that it couldn't take longer than in some cases. The fire calls, you know, they haven't changed a bit, like, like you were saying, Mayor, that whenever they came to, came into the 911 caller, they go directly to the fire dispatcher. The challenge we have there, which I mentioned before, is we have several apparatus going on a fire call, which they're going to be coming from a further distance. And we've made some strides on that, and that was through those technology upgrades that we've had. The, we're still, if you take out the IMSA call taker time, we're still meeting all of those response times when, when the call comes to the fire department. We're still up in, you know, the 90, over the 90%.
Okay. Any other questions for Cecil? Okay. Thank you, Chief Clay.
Thank you.
Who's doing? You're doing IMSA?
Yeah, we had intended to have IMSA be here to, to give their report, but we had, there was conflict. Steve Williamson and Dr. Goodlow were both unable to make it today, so I'm just going to give a quick update on kind of where they are. Obviously, if there's any questions about IMSA, we'll forward those on to them and get the answers back for you. Our measure, as council had a priority to make sure we knew what fire, police, and IMSA are doing on their response times. IMSA's goal is eight minutes and 59 seconds in the Oklahoma City metro area, and in the first six months of the year, they've been responding to call, to those calls 80% of the time within that timeframe. That's down just slightly from last fiscal year. Their total for the whole fiscal year was 81% in last fiscal year. And so those of you that may have been on the IMSA board, they have a contractual agreement with Paramedics Plus of responding within 90% of the time, eight minutes and 59 seconds, but Paramedics Plus is able to exclude some of those calls due to various system statuses or other exceptions. What we're looking at here is what the average citizen receives. This is all calls regardless of the timeframe or what's going on, so 80% of the time, IMSA's there within eight minutes and 59 seconds. The other area that we wanted to look at was cardiac survival rate. Unfortunately, in working with Dr. Goodlow's office, the Office of the Medical Director, they've fallen behind due to some staffing complications with pulling together the cardiac arrest survival rate. They hope to have the 2011 data in the coming weeks and then 2012 shortly thereafter, so we don't have any results to report this time. At our year-end report, we would certainly anticipate we'll have cardiac arrest survival rate for you to be able, and we'll be, the plan is to track that on a year-to-year basis. As we look at this, what, hopefully what we've done here is given you a little bit of a look at providing a safe and secure community. What we intend to do is come back each quarter and highlight a couple of the other priorities. In, in about three months, we'll be coming back to look at maintaining strong financial management, promoting thriving neighborhoods, and then after the fourth quarter, developing a transportation system that works for all citizens, and supporting high-quality public education and community health and wellness. And then after that, our annual citizen report will be presented to council. And then what we would expect is we'd start this process over again in next fiscal year with providing a safe and secure community coming up around this same timeframe. We hope this gives you an opportunity to kind of look a little bit more in-depth at those areas that are council priorities, give you a chance to interact with the department heads who are working in those areas, hear about what they're doing to work to try to meet your priorities. So if there are any questions, I'd be happy to answer those for you, or if you have any comments or concerns on how we're doing this, we'd be happy to take those here.
Yeah, I, I got a question. As a former IMSA director, when I was on the board, we, we had that 90% goal, and that goal was being met every, every, every time we had, we had a report. And now I see that, that goal is down into the 80% range by what you're saying, with the caveat you threw in there, oh, but Paramedics Plus is able to exclude a whole, for one reason or another, a whole number of those calls, and that, what I gathered you were telling me was that that's why we used to be 90% and now we're 80%.
Right, the, uh-
Let me, let me finish, okay?
Okay, certain.
Based on that, I would like to have IMSA themselves come and, and give their, give, give the report, so that the questions can come directly from them about what's going on.
Certainly. And, and that was one of the things that when we worked with them, we, we wanted to make sure it was what the citizens are receiving. As, they have a specific contract with Paramedics Plus with various requirements for Paramedics Plus on their response times, and it's spelled out in the contract, meeting that 90% level, but there are exceptions in there that's basically, again, to, for those contractual requirements, but again, Steve Williamson or someone from IMSA will have them here in the coming weeks to be able to answer those questions for you.
Okay. Thank you, Doug. Is that the end of the city manager report?
Yes, sir, it is.
Okay. Do we have any citizens that have signed up? Any citizens to be heard? Okay, we have executive session.
MFAD, is that where you go?
Okay, we are back from executive session, and I need a motion on item... No, I thought we'd do council first.
It's eight I-1?
Eight I-1.
How long do we have? What should we do?
Motion to second. Cast your vote. It passes unanimously. I'll adjourn the council meeting. We'll reconvene MFA. I need a motion on the MFA item.
Move the item to second.
Motion to second. Cast your vote. It passes unanimously. I'll adjourn MFA. We're done.